Six o'clock, if you'd please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will tell you, this is the person making the reservation has to sign the book, so they have to be here.
Thank you and welcome to Union Township Board of Trustees meeting for January fourteenth, twenty twenty five, six P M. Mr. Campbell, at the record show, all trustees are present. Do we have any correspondents?
Yes, sir. I have two. They're both liquor permits. One's a change of ownership, stock options. It's Red Lobster Hospitality LLC doing business as Red Lobster number two eighty-eight, six sixteen Ohio Pike Union Township, Cincinnati, Ohio four five two four five. I've got the accompanying zoning certificate and there's no objections. So that's the first one. The second one is also a liquor permit. It's a new permit and it is ROM Vijay, R A M V I J A Y LLC. They're doing business as Clough Pike Shell Gas, forty-two sixty-one Mount Carmel to Basco Road. It's in Union Township, Cincinnati, Ohio four five two four five. Again, I've got the accompanying zoning certificate and there's no objections to that either. And that concludes the correspondence.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. We have no proclamation and special presentations tonight. Moving on with personnel actions. Before I ask police and fire to introduce, I'm just going to reference, as we've got a we're fortunate to have so many personnel actions tonight. And I just want to take a moment to acknowledge the promotions and hire for police and fire and the individuals that are going to come before the community tonight demonstrated exceptional dedication and excellence to the community. And their leadership has just been instrumental and continue to prioritize the safety and well-being of our community. So just first off, I want to say congratulations for everyone that is coming before the board tonight. This time I'd like to hand it over to Chief Reese for introduction of your hire and then we'll move forward with promotions.
Thank you, Mr. Logue. Gentlemen, tonight I'd like to present Heather Mason to the board for the position of police officer for Union Township. Ms. Mason is a resident of Claremont County, Ohio, and a twenty twenty-one graduate of the University of Cincinnati Police Academy where she received her OPADA police officer certification. Ms. Mason holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from the University of Cincinnati. And Ms. Mason is a member of the United States Army Reserve where she's served for thirteen years and holds the rank of staff sergeant. Ms. Mason served two years as a police officer with the Coleraine Township Police Department and comes to Union Township from the Milford Police Department where she served as a police officer for one year. Ms. Mason has successfully completed all pre-employment phases for the position of police officer, including background, polygraph, and psychological examination. I'm requesting the board appoint Heather Mason to the position of police officer in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement and pending successful completion of a physical examination. Ms. Mason's start date is tentatively scheduled for February fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Chief Reese. That is quite impressive. Oh, no, no, no. Sorry, Ms. Mason. Sorry, sorry, sorry. I love the initiative. I love it. Hey, that is quite impressive. I want to hand the floor to Vice Chairman, trustee Joe Dills.
Heather, appreciate you being here tonight. You got your family with you?
I do, yes, sir.
Please, yeah, but point them out to me, please.
Uh, they are all over in the left corner, all over there.
Love it. Love it. It's a big night for you. Great night. And Coleraine Township and then Milford and now you're here, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you'll notice all of our officers here, they stay here. It's a good community, good family, good camaraderie, and I want that for you too. And so appreciate your service in the army as well, so very much. But yeah, we're glad to have you onboard, absolutely.
Thank you.
Trustee Becker?
Uh, yeah. Hey, ditto's to what Mr. Dill said. You're obviously in a hurry to get started. Take up any more of your time, so, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, I'll just have to say part of that's on me, New Year's. So, hey, we are so excited to have you. Staff Sergeant, that's impressive. And they say twelve years, Army? Thirteen? Okay, awesome, wonderful. We're excited to have you. Just thank you so much. So, roll, yeah. Yeah, I'll entertain the motion for roll call.
He's new here.
Okay, entertain a motion, I'll entertain a motion to hire Heather Mason for the position of police officer.
So moved.
I will second that.
Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. As we go through, Ms. Mason, as we go through, you're the new hire we have. Wonderful. Join the team and for all promotions. Everyone stick around. We'll do photos up front here after we get through all the personnel actions. Chief Reese, if you could introduce your promotions.
Thank you, Mr. Logue. Gentlemen, tonight I'm very proud to present Detective Derek Disbennett for promotion to the rank of sergeant. After a thorough assessment, Detective Disbennett was selected for promotion among an excellent group of candidates. Detective Disbennett started his career with the Ohio State Patrol in two thousand and eleven before coming to the Union Township Police Department in April of two thousand and fifteen as a patrol officer. He served as a field training officer, directed patrol officer, and member of the honor guard while assigned to the patrol division. Detective Disbennett was assigned to the investigative unit in June of two thousand and twenty-three where he's held the role of general detective. Detective Disbennett is also a twenty twenty-four graduate of the University of Cincinnati where he earned an associate's degree in criminal justice. And he's a two thousand and twelve graduate of the Ohio State Patrol Police Academy where he earned his Ohio Peace Officer certification. Detective Disbennett has served nine years with U T P D and has received excellent performance appraisals from his supervisors. Since joining the department in two thousand and fifteen, Detective Disbennett has demonstrated through consistent top performance his commitment to serving the citizens of Union Township. Tonight, I'm pleased to request the board's endorsement of Detective Derek Disbennett for promotion to the rank of sergeant effective January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Trustee Dills?
Thank you for you. Derek, ten years. Appreciate you very much. Yeah, good people. Appreciate you being here. Thanks for being a part of Union Township. Promotions well deserved. So, thank you very much. Absolutely.
Trustee Becker?
Uh, yeah. Hey, again, ditto's and, you know, you've got a great track record. Any stories you want to tell us?
None, none I want to share now.
As detective, I see your name coming up on a lot of the call-out reports. It looks like you're involved in a lot of stuff. And you've got a lot of stories to tell, some good, some not so good.
Sure.
Congrats on your promotion.
Appreciate you, sir.
He definitely stays busy. Hey, what was that award from the Claremont County Police Law Enforcement Gala where we had the awesome mustache display?
That probably wasn't my finer, my best picture, but yeah.
I've loved it.
It hasn't come back since for good reason.
Come on.
Mainly my wife, but.
Do you recall the recognition of the award?
I think it was just for Officer of the Year.
Just Officer of the Year, just.
It did without the help of everybody's support, but so.
Humble man, humble man.
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Well, we're fortunate to have you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to promote Officer Derek Disbennett to the position of police sergeant effective January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, seven A M. The rate consistent with collective bargaining agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Derek.
Congratulations. That's the good thing about doing it. Absolutely. No, Officer of the Year. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Please stick, please stick around. Oh, yeah, you're going to do your promotion?
Yep.
Derek, I mean, I'd like to Chief Reese and the board, I'd like to present you with your certificate of promotion to rank sergeant. Also in here would be your sergeant's badge, backs on the radio.
All right. Chief Reese, at this time, can you introduce Cameron Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Logue. This evening I am equally proud to present Detective Cameron Shaw for promotion to the rank of patrol sergeant. After a thorough assessment, Detective Shaw was selected for promotion among an excellent group of candidates. Detective Shaw started his career with the Merrymont Police Department in two thousand and ten where he served as a patrol officer and sergeant. Detective Shaw started with the Union Township Police Department in March of two thousand and fifteen as a patrol officer. He served as a field training officer and a directed patrol officer while assigned to the patrol division. Detective Shaw was assigned to the Claremont County Narcotics Unit in April of two thousand and twenty-three as an agent. And in November of two thousand and twenty-three was reassigned to the investigative unit here at U T P D where he's held the role of general detective. Detective Shaw is a two thousand and nine graduate of the University of Cincinnati where he earned his associate's degree in criminal justice. He's a two thousand and ten graduate of the University of Cincinnati Police Academy where he earned his Ohio Peace Officer certification. Detective Shaw has served nine years with the U T P D and has received excellent performance appraisals from his supervisors. Since joining the police department in two thousand and fifteen, Detective Shaw has demonstrated through consistent top performance his commitment to serving the citizens of Union Township. And I'm pleased to request the board's endorsement of Detective Cameron Shaw to the promotion of sergeant effective January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Trustee Dills?
Cameron, big moment. So March will be ten years ago on us, right?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you very much. Good people. You and Derek absolutely both deserve this promotion tonight. And you'll make a fine sergeant. So thanks for sticking out with us. Thanks for being here. And you're a good part of the family. So thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
Trustee Becker?
Yeah. Again, any stories you want to tell?
No, sir.
All right. You're going to Union Township, what, ten years?
Close to ten years, ten years in March.
Going on, going on ten years. That's great. Well, we certainly appreciate your service and congratulations.
Thank you.
Hey, wonderful. Come up on ten years' experience. Was Merrymont where you got your start, you said?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. You worked for Chief Hines?
I did.
Okay, wonderful. Well, great, great to have you here in Union Township and continuing out your career. We're excited for you for your promotion. So, hearing no further discussion, roll call, or sorry, I'd like to entertain a motion for promotion of Cameron Shaw to the position of police sergeant effective January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, seven oh one A M. The rate of pay consistent with the collective bargaining agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Cameron.
Congratulations.
Absolutely.
Second, Shaw, now sergeant. We'd like to put it beyond behalf of the board and the chief if you'd like to give your certificate of promotion to rank sergeant. Also, if you can shove around with your white Russian badge.
Chief Clemens, at this time, if you could introduce Adam Dressler.
Sure. Mr. Logue, if you don't mind, I'd like to take a minute here to first just kind of explain the process of the position here. So through a recent local thirty-four twelve contract negotiations, it was determined that we had a little bit of a lack of command structure within our organization and a need to improve the span of control. Working together, an agreement was made which has led us to tonight. These captain positions have slightly different roles than the captain position in the past as they will fill the role as a station captain, meaning they will oversee all activity, maintenance, and operations out of their respected station. This allows for one point of contact out of each station rather than the three. Tonight I'll present the top six candidates, which we had sixteen tests for. The process consisted of a written test, an oral and written evaluation, and multiple interviews. And I appreciate your support as we strive for continuous improvement in our department. So with that being said, I'd like to first introduce and recommend Lieutenant Adam Dressler for consideration for the promotion to the rank of captain. Lieutenant Dressler was hired full-time by Union Township in April two thousand and one and promoted to the rank of lieutenant in two thousand and six and has spent the last twenty-four years protecting and serving this community. Adam has fulfilled many roles over his career with his most recent responsibilities, including fleet and equipment maintenance. He has been actively involved in the department, the community, and has assisted with vehicle purchasing and upfitting as well as some grant writing. He is a fire and EMS instructor, live fire instructor, and a member of our honor guard. Lieutenant Dressler has a positive attitude, always striving to make our department better. Pending the board's approval, Lieutenant Dressler will fill the role of captain of Station Fifty-Two. I would recommend the promotion of Adam Dressler to the rank of captain at a rate of pay consistent with the collective bargaining agreement effective January twentieth, twenty twenty-five at seven A M.
Thank you, Chief Clemens. Trustee Dills?
Adam, the twenty-four years you've been with our department, right?
Yes, sir.
Long overdue, much deserved. You're good people. You and I have had many, many conversations. I like how you're a straight shooter. You love your township. You love this township very much. There's no doubt about it. You love your fire department. So, long overdue for these positions to be filled and no doubt you deserve it. So congratulations, absolutely, yeah.
Trustee Becker?
So, it's Station Fifty-Two?
Yes, sir.
The audience has no idea where that is. Which one is Fifty-Two?
That is the box-busting station.
Box-busting. That's the newest one we have, isn't it? No, second oldest. When on Beechwood would be the newest?
Yes.
Is that your favorite station?
I like it down there.
Okay. That sounded like a good answer.
I do. I like in the corner down there.
All right. Well, congratulations on becoming the boss down there at Fifty-Two.
Appreciate it.
All right. As Chief Clemens described, I mean, long overdue, instilling command structure, and then the oral, the written, the multiple rounds of interviews. Testament to everyone in the fire fighting business that put themselves out there, put themselves out there every day to serve in our community. Excited to have you as Station Fifty-Two captain and being able to continue to grow and develop and help mentor those that come onboard. I wrote down here, yes, in addition to your twenty-four years, but from the fleet maintenance, fleet maintenance that happens down there traditionally in the bay, in the bay, right? But from grant writing, instructor, all those additional duties, that's, I learned more about you with that introduction tonight. So, always, always impressive. So, thank you. At this time, gentlemen, I'll consider a motion, entertain a motion for promotion of Adam Dressler to the position of captain effective January twentieth, twenty twenty-five at seven A M. at a rate pay consistent with the collective bargaining agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Congratulations.
Congrats, boss.
Chief Clemens, if you could introduce your promotion, Kevin Carrer.
Thank you, Mr. Logue. I'd like to introduce and recommend Lieutenant Kevin Carrer here to, for consideration to the promotion, the rank of captain. Lieutenant Carrer here is the third longest-tenured employee for the fire department. Twenty-seven years ago was hired full-time by Union Township in July of nineteen ninety-eight and promoted to lieutenant in two thousand and seven. Kevin is a member of the International Association of Arson Investigators as a fire investigator and is in charge of the department's fire investigation team as well as being a member of the Claremont County Fire Investigation Team. Kevin has also completed building emergency response teams, BERT, training, which specializes in rescue-type situations. Pending the board's approval, Lieutenant Carrer here will fill the role of captain at Station Fifty-three, which is the newest station on Beechwood Road. I would recommend the promotion of Kevin Carrer here to the rank of captain at a rate of pay consistent with the collective bargaining agreement effective January twentieth, twenty twenty-five at seven oh one A M.
Trustee Dills?
Kevin, twenty-seven years.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you very much. The, where's your family at?
My wife, Michelle, my mom, and dad.
Love it. I love it. Thank you for giving us twenty-seven years. And how is the Polo Fields location? How was that one?
It's pretty nice.
It's nice, isn't it? It is nice. Kevin, this is long overdue, much deserved. You got the respect of everyone in this room. I appreciate you very much. Yeah, absolutely. Well said, yeah.
Trustee Becker?
Twenty-seven years. You've seen a lot of changes here in Union Township.
Yes, sir.
So I'm fascinated by you being an arson inspector. Any particular cases come to mind as most interesting?
No, not all fair enough. We kind of do the whole gamut.
All right. Well, thank you so much for your service and congrats on becoming the boss down there.
Thank you.
Yeah, hey, we are, again, excited to have you there as the station captain at Fifty-three. Happy to hear your background for fire investigation at the same rate too. And then Trustee Dills was asking about Fifty-three and how everything is there. I mean, I feel like sometimes I try to keep you guys busy. I didn't share this one yet, but I'm gonna share this. New Year's Day, we're driving on Beechwood, very close to Station Fifty-three, and just seconds away from a tree that both my wife and I saw start to fall parallel across Beechwood. And I got stopped within a handful of feet and got on the phone with dispatch right away to call Fifty-three out to help clean this up and not see another car come crashing into the tree, which happened. And so anyway, you guys are just great. That's all I can say. I mean, so I know, you know, I can express that sentiment from being close to a firehouse, but that's the reason why we have the firehouses where we strategically have them all across the township. So all the residents have, have that, that response time when they're not having a great day and you guys are there. So, thank you. All right, gentlemen, at this time I entertain a motion for the promotion of Kevin Carrer to the position of captain effective January twentieth, twenty twenty-five at seven oh one A M. at a rate pay consistent with the collective bargaining agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Cameron. Hey, congratulations, absolutely. Do my best not to keep you busy, but. It was wild. I meant to tell you guys about it. It was wild.
Yes. All right. And just a reminder to everyone to stick around because we're going to do some of the group pictures with new hire and promotions. Chief Clemens, at this time, if you could introduce your promotion candidate, Chris Gilpin.
Thank you, sir. I would like to introduce and recommend Lieutenant Chris Gilpin for consideration to the promotion to the rank of captain. Lieutenant Gilpin was hired full-time by Union Township in April two thousand and one and promoted to lieutenant in two thousand and three. Lieutenant Gilpin is a veteran, having served in the United States Navy from nineteen ninety-three to nineteen ninety-eight. Chris is a fire instructor, live fire instructor, and has completed numerous leadership Chris is a fire instructor, live fire instructor, and has completed numerous leadership courses over his career. He has been instrumental in the training and mentoring with many within our department, especially our newest employees. Pending the board's approval, Lieutenant Gilpin will fill the role of captain at Station Forty-Nine. I would recommend the promotion of Chris Gilpin to the rank of captain at a rate of pay consistent with the collective bargaining agreement effective January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five at seven oh two AM.
Thank you, Chief Clemens. Trustee Dills?
Chris, my, twenty-four years, is that what it was? Is that how long you've been here, twenty-four years?
Two thousand and one.
Two thousand and one, okay, yeah. Yeah, I appreciate your time and service. You have the respect of your team. Appreciate you very much. It's a long time, and the promotion's long overdue, so appreciate you, Chris, very much.
Thanks, sir.
Absolutely, sir, yeah.
Trustee Becker?
Which one, Station Forty-Nine?
One right by the Harley shop.
Harley shop.
By the mall.
Great. Is that your favorite station?
Yes, it is.
Got a lot better after the improvement there.
Yes, sir.
How many years ago is that? It's in the last ten years running.
Two thousand and fifteen-ish, I believe.
Yeah, sounds right.
Yeah, much better.
Good, good, Clay, that's worked out. Well, thank you so much for your service, and it sounds like you've earned the promotion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Trustee Becker. What'd you do in the U.S. Navy?
I was an aircrewman.
Aircrewman? Wonderful. Eight years, ten years, I heard?
Five.
Five? Good, all right. Awesome. Incredible wealth of experience. I'm happy that you're there at Forty-Nine. Just, again, I think what I continue to see here is, while we're fortunate to have this new command structure for station captains, because I think if we had limited chief to just one position or something, you guys are all very competitive, all the firefighters, so, you guys, just wonderful. We're blessed to have you. So, at this time, gentlemen, I'll consider the motion, entertain a motion for promoting Chris Gilpin to the position of captain effective January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five at seven oh two AM at a rate of pay consistent with the collective bargaining agreement.
So moved.
Next.
Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Chris.
Chief Clemens, at this time, if you could introduce your promotion candidate, Matt Losi.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. I would like to introduce and recommend Lieutenant Matt Losi for consideration for the promotion to the rank of captain. Lieutenant Losi was hired full-time by Union Township in June of two thousand and one, and promoted to lieutenant in two thousand and eight. He is a fire EMS safety inspector and live fire instructor, as well as a fire investigator. Matt has been a part of many committees throughout his career, and currently fills a role as our training officer. Matt is a credentialed Ohio Fire Officer through the Ohio Fire Chiefs Association, and completed the Ohio Fire Executive Program in two thousand and twenty-two. Pending the board's approval, Lieutenant Losi will fill the role of captain at Station Fifty on Old Seventy-four near Holman Motors. I would recommend the promotion of Matt Losi to the rank of captain at a rate of pay consistent with the collective bargaining agreement effective January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five at seven oh three AM.
Thank you, Chief Clemens. Trustee Dills?
Matt, twenty-four years as well, right?
Yes, sir.
The, by the way, good-looking haircut, by the way. Real sharp, real sharp, I like that. I can see why you got promoted, clearly.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, good people, Matt. We've had a lot of good conversations, a lot of good input. You're very well-respected. Promotion's long overdue for you. Well done, so congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Trustee Becker?
So it's, you're an investigator? Did I hear that?
Yes.
Is that arson investigator or something different, or all of the above?
Same as lieutenant.
Okay, so it's, you guys get the same job, then?
Kind of.
I know, so just, all right. Great, so any stories you want to tell from what you see in Township?
Nothing I can share here.
All right, well, congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you.
Hey, Matt, also a training officer, so, and what was your year of start here? Two thousand and one? That's incredible. Wow, just, again, thank you for, thank you for the patience, thank you for the time, thank you for the commitment and dedication to the community, so, well-earned, well-earned. We're excited for you. Gentlemen, at this time, we'll entertain a motion to promote Matt Losi to the position of captain effective January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five at seven oh three AM at a rate of pay consistent with the collective bargaining agreement.
So moved.
Next.
Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Matt.
Chief Clemens, at this time, if you could introduce your promotion candidate, Steve Offerd.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. I would like to introduce and recommend Lieutenant Steve Offerd for consideration for the promotion to the rank of captain. Lieutenant Offerd was hired full-time by Union Township in October of two thousand and one, and promoted to lieutenant in two thousand and three. Lieutenant Offerd is a hazmat specialist and has completed many hazmat-related trainings, is also a weapons of mass destruction technician. Lieutenant Offerd completed the Ohio Fire Executive Program in two thousand and ten. Steve has held many positions with the IFF Local Thirty-four Twelve, and assisted with several grants for the department. Pending the board's approval, Lieutenant Offerd will fill the role of captain at Station Fifty-One, which is the water tower. I would recommend the promotion of Steve Offerd to the rank of captain at a rate of pay consistent with the collective bargaining agreement effective January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five at seven oh four AM.
Thank you, Chief Clemens. Trustee Dills?
Steve, congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
We have had a lot of conversations, and you might be the most, one of the most bold guys I've ever met in my life. And you know what? I respect it, though, because you're a straight shooter, and you don't mess around. I like that, and...
I appreciate that.
Yeah, that is a compliment. I mean it, and so I respect that. Took twenty-four years of service here with Union Township. I appreciate you being a lifer very much. You served very well as president of the union for our firefighters, and your team respects you. You're part of the family, so congratulations. Much overdue. Absolutely. Thank you, Steve.
Trustee Becker?
Weapons of mass destruction.
I knew you were going there.
Tell me you don't have any stories to tell.
I have no stories.
Good. I bet you have some hazmat stories. Are they mostly fuel spills, or what have you got there?
You know, twenty-four years, a lot of things happen, and I take a lot of time to tell a lot of stories, so. Keep those to myself.
All right, well, congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you.
Steve, yeah, hazmat specialist, so that has to be highly regulated by about every agency, but EPA?
A lot.
Yeah.
All the alphabet.
Oh, I would say so. That takes some dedication, but I would definitely say, given a worst-case type of situation like that, I hope that doesn't happen too often, that you need to lean on that. We're glad to have you, grateful for that, and that dedication. Station Fifty-One, yeah, that's gonna be, they're fortunate to have you, and echo what Trustee Dills has to say again. Really enjoyed that, about your leadership and your character, and just being straight, so, appreciate it.
I appreciate that.
Thanks for the time here and patience as we get here to this day. Gentlemen, at this time, entertain a motion for the promotion of Steve Offerd to the position of captain in January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five, seven oh four AM at a rate of pay consistent with the collective bargaining agreement.
So moved.
Next.
Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Let me think about it. Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Chief Clemens, at this time, if you could introduce your promotion candidate, Steve Guth.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to introduce and recommend Lieutenant Steve Guth for consideration for the promotion to the rank of captain. Lieutenant Guth was hired full-time by Union Township in November of two thousand and six, and was promoted in two thousand and twenty-one. Lieutenant Guth is a fire investigator, is part of both the Union Township and the Claremont County Fire Investigation Teams. Steve currently oversees the department's uniform and gear ordering, as well as our EMS supplies, ensuring all units are properly stocked to handle any emergency. Steve is extremely reliable and efficient in completing any task assigned to him. Pending the board's approval, Lieutenant Guth will fill the role of captain of Station Forty-Eight on One Twenty-five in Woodhamsville. I would recommend the promotion of Steve Guth to the rank of captain at a rate of pay consistent with the collective bargaining agreement effective January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five at seven oh five AM.
Thank you, Chief Clemens. Trustee Dills?
Steve, nineteen years, right?
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Yeah.
You said two thousand and six, right?
November two thousand and six.
Got it, got it, okay, into this year. Eighteen, nineteen years. Steve, you're good people. We ran into each other many times. Appreciate you very much. Long overdue. You're in charge of the gear, is that right?
So, uniform, station uniforms, fire gear, I guess. I did see that. I have a couple guys that help along with it, too.
Okay, don't mess up on that one.
No.
Steve, long overdue, much appreciated, so appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Trustee Becker?
So you're, again, an investigator. Anything come to mind as of particular interest?
Not in particular, but I enjoy doing it.
Okay. So the, so it's a WT firehouse in Woodhamsville. That's our oldest one, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
Is that in decent shape? Does it need anything?
Um...
Don't ask that question.
Yeah, we're currently in the works on that, I believe, so.
Okay. We'll follow up the chief later on.
We'll get there.
Well, congratulations on your promotion.
Steve, yeah, I just, I'd say Station Forty-Eight, yeah, oldest and most haunted, right?
Yes, it is.
All right. And gentlemen, the board, you may recall, is one of the early actions you guys took with me, and that was for doing a remodel, at least for the bathroom there at Station Forty-Eight.
I remember that.
I remember peeking my head in there before the work was done, and it was needed. So, anyway, hey, they're fortunate to have you there. Procurement, the gear ordering, sounds simple. There is nothing simple about it in procurement and acquisition, so we're fortunate to have you handling that, handling that with your team, and being a lead on that, so, thank you. Keep up the great work, and keep this moving forward for you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, at this time, entertain a motion to promote Steve Guth to the position of captain effective January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five at seven oh five AM at a rate of pay consistent with collective bargaining agreement.
So moved.
Next.
Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Steve.
Congratulations, absolutely. All right. Yeah, we're gonna do pick, we're gonna do round of pictures now, so probably with all the logistics of that, we won't miss anybody. Trustee Dills, I am surprised, through all of that, you contained your excitement to make any type of basketball joke.
I thought about it.
The priority.
All right. Fire, promoting.
They didn't get enough pictures.
It's good, yeah, good turnout. Real good turnout. It's good to see.
A lot of support.
It's good. I'm in the family's car, and I see some familiar faces here. Where'd Mike go?
All right, ladies and gentlemen. I want to keep us, uh, we, we are through our personnel actions and up to public comments. I want to keep us moving forward with township business this evening. So, at this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. If you're here to speak, please use comment cards in the back of the room to record your information for public record. And we turn them to Mr. Campbell. I've got one here. Each speaker has up to five minutes, share their thoughts. And just, I reiterate, it's a public's time to express their opinions, and we're, we're here to listen and consider all inputs. Mr. Campbell, we have, do we have one?
Uh, we got one from Dave Perkins.
All right, Dave, come on up.
Hello. Good afternoon. I'm Dave Perkins. I'm a resident of Goshen Township. Let me introduce myself and tell you why I'm here. I was a police officer here for twenty-two and a half years. I retired December 15th of thirty-one years. And retiring on the fifteenth, I'm already back to work on January 2nd in another police department. I came here tonight to watch some of my fellow people I worked with, fire department and police department, celebrate the promotions. But throughout that, you hear all the experience and all the training that they've got. And I sat at home the other day, and I was a former union president, and I looked and I saw an article in the Sun, Media Sun. And it was, the alert or the headline was Double Dipper Alert. And it sort of upset me because this time and age, no one wants to do this job. When I retired, people said, why do you want to go back to it? Nobody wants to do this. Well, I guess public service and, you know, other people want you. And as soon as you leave Union Township with all that training experience, there's people recruiting you. And it's important for everybody in this township, and I would support that and do support it in the township I live in. And I understand tonight it's up for a vote. And the article upset me because I feel like that the person that wrote that article is actually doing the very same thing. If you retired from government service and you're back, whether it's local, whatever, you're doing the same thing. But this is not a Union Township issue, the lack of police officers that wanted to do this job. It's not Ohio, it's not the state. It's a national thing. And if you research it, all over, they're doing hiring incentives to hire people, drawing from other departments. And Mr. Wright and myself worked on this retire-rehire for almost eight months, almost a year, a little bit every eight months. During that time, we worked great together. Some of the trustees came to me and asked the input, and realizing this is also a political thing, but I would think anybody that does their research would understand why this is a necessity now to keep these people. And it's a lot of training. Even the amount of training that you spend money on, you'll never get the experience that you're getting here in Union Township. So, that, tonight, I just want to let you know, this is a great idea, this is a necessity. Any comments or anything, or questions? Feel free to ask. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Dave. I greatly appreciate that. The, the board, the board for public comment, we do kind of keep it that we're, we're hearing you. I really appreciate hearing your comments and your perspective. Thirty-one years of, of service to the township, correct?
Correct. About twenty-two and a half years here, but thirty-one service. And most people can retire at twenty-five years in the age of fifty-two. I stayed a little bit longer, but I'm just saying, even people, you wouldn't buy a car and drive it for a certain amount of year, knowing you had more miles to go in that car and just let it walk, you know, park it and not use it, or let somebody else have it. So, that's my, that's what I'm trying to explain, is that there's a need to keep the people you've got here. You've got people even to be police chiefs, investigators for prosecutor's office, and going to other agencies, and they're like, wow, I can't believe I got you. It's like when you catch up a bargain, you know? That's it.
Mr. Bustrow, at your, Dave, thank you for speaking, by the way. And at your, I'll call your retirement party ceremony that we had, it's more somber than it was party, to be honest. But, you know, I, when, when you'd asked me to talk, I didn't expect that. I appreciated that. But you, um, I, I have to be a man and own up to mistakes. And I did not realize this retire-rehire program was going to take so long to implement. And I hundred percent take responsibility for that, because I thought it was going to be done a lot sooner. I didn't realize the legalities and the proper language and the whole loops we had to jump through. And so, because you are one of the finest officers we have ever had.
Thank you.
And I can't blame you to retire. You paid into your pension for thirty-one years, and you earned that. It's your money. You paid into it. You retired, and you have thirty-one years of experience, and we lost it, just like that. And all of our, you know, we just hired a young lady here. She doesn't get your experience or knowledge or wisdom at all. And that's on us. And so, and now, Goshen's got you. Goshen gets your blessings that you get to dispel on those younger police officers and still serve. But appreciate you very much. And I apologize that I let you down and it took longer than I expected. So, but you're good people, Dave, and we, it's our loss, hundred percent our loss, and Goshen's gain, so.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, Dave.
I enjoy it, and I miss all the people here in Union Township. I didn't want to leave.
I know.
Smart move.
I know. By the way, my, my son, Gunner, I got a puppy for them for Christmas. My son, Gunner, put Chaos's hat on, on that new puppy, that dog. So, just, just know Chaos still lives. He does, he does, so.
Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dave. All right, seeing no further, oh, we got some public comment cards. Wonderful. If you could please walk those off. Mr. Campbell, do we need to get their home address on speaking?
Yeah, they, they want to read my writing and get me involved.
Okay.
I think we know. I think we know.
Mel DeWitt.
Mel DeWitt, if you'd like to, we've got your, your name and your, your address for the record right there as well.
Okay. And you've got it on previous ones as well. I was not planning on speaking tonight, but after seeing all these promotions and all these increases, I wanted to relate. I moved to Union Township approximately fifty years ago. I've been around for a while, as you can tell by my wisdom and colored hair. At that time, I did join the, what was then the Woodhamsville Fire Department as a volunteer. We had two departments within the township, both full volunteer. Later, they merged. And I think we had one police officer at the time in the township. So, you can imagine just how much this township has grown and improved. I have seen a lot. I was the only fire investigator within the township for many years without the respect that the investigators deserve. I know that the investigators from today are a heck of a lot more skilled than I was ever developed. So, very much improvement. Now I hang around with the cops rather than the fire department, but I still respect both. And I respect the, in particular, the service department. The snow should increase that respect. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mel. Thank you. Mark Gillespie. Mark Gillespie? Hi, Mark.
Hey, Michael. It's been a long time.
Sorry. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight either, but I had to after it hit me how ironic it is that we are voting, or you guys are voting on a policy tonight that in some ways is fiscally irresponsible, but beyond that, it's a policy that goes against everything we saw tonight. We saw a lot of promotions. I think we saw a restructuring of our fire department that didn't happen over the last however many years. And I just think it's ironic that we're so afraid that somebody's going to leave, and maybe the next guy can't do the job. The last time I was at this meeting, Mr. Wright wasn't sitting here, and neither were these two chiefs. And you know what? I think everybody in this room and probably in this township has confidence that they can do the job. There are people I know that I've seen on social media say, oh, my gosh, we've lost this chief, and we've lost this administrator, and we lost that chief. Yeah. And we filled them in with a chief that decided we needed to restructure the fire department, a chief that found people within the department to promote, right? And they must be able to do the job. So, why would we stymie that? Why would we take those positions and say, nope, you have to wait because this guy, we're going to let him retire, and then we're going to hire him back? So, you have to wait further. To me, I know we've had some longtime employees here because I've heard them say they were twenty-one, twenty-four, eighteen, whatever. Sometimes I wonder why they stick around. Go somewhere else. If the people above you are not retiring, I'm surprised they don't leave and go somewhere else. That could be the thing of this policy that, that's underlying that you may not see. So, anyway, I have complete faith in the three of you. Mr. Wright, you and I have known each other for a while. We haven't seen each other in a while. But I have great faith that these guys, who are newer in their positions, can do it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it.
Mr. Gillespie, if you could, no, you're okay, you're okay, you're okay. I was just going to say, so, you're in a little bit on, on item C. We'll be talking about, we call it the Employment Extension Program, but it's really the retire-rehire program. That's what you're talking about?
Yes.
I've got a lot to talk about, addressing exactly what you said. I totally get it. If you wouldn't mind, I know it's a little bit longer of a wait to stick around.
Oh, I'll be here.
Because we'll, we'll be deliberating on that here shortly. I'll answer everything you, and all, all three of us will answer everything you were talking about.
I'll be here until the end.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Chris?
Churumbolo.
Churumbolo?
Churumbolo, yeah.
Churumbolo, thank you, Chris.
No, thank you. Thank you for listening to me. So, I'm Chris Churumbolo. I work with Eastgate Spring Healthcare Center and Rehabilitation over on Glen Estee Woodhamsville Road. And as you know, ODOT's constructing the overpass for Glen Estee right now. And so, since, as, over the last several months, as more and more construction's going on, we're now running a huge predicament. Semi trucks are using GPS routes and, and using that, leaving Walmart, getting on Klepper and hanging a left on Glen Estee and have nowhere to go. And so, our building itself is, is, it's, we've been in place for thirty-nine years. It's not constructed to have a semi truck to go around the buildings. What semis are doing, many of whom from all over, have no clue where they're going. They just follow their GPS, trying to take Glen Estee to get back to 275, either coming from the Jeff Wyler of Klepper or the other way. People are going in and have nowhere to turn around. So, what they're doing is they're coming into our driveway, getting stuck. And every day, we have two to three semi tractor-trailer trucks getting stuck in our entrance. And so, I know fire and, I mean, fire and police have been involved to a certain extent. And we, today, we had a wrecker take a semi out twice. And so, I'm asking for the township's help. We really need to put signs up temporarily until the overpass is open, to where we prevent any tractor-trailer from entering Glen Estee Woodhamsville heading, in this case, north on Glen Estee, because there's no place for them to go. And, you know, we're putting, we, as of right now, literally tonight, putting temporary signs up at the entrance or anything, trying to say no tractor-trailer turn around. But we really need to try to prevent them from even going down past Golden Corral slash Chipotle, going in that direction anyways. Because once they hit that, there's a, there's no place to turn around. So, if they get stuck in that point, they need to come into our entrance, back out without even going in. So, I'm trying to figure out ways to have signs all along that, to prevent anyone from any direction of a tractor-trailer from going down Glen Estee Woodhamsville at all. Because otherwise, what's happening is, we've had issues where, just the other, just a little bit ago, we had a wrecker come and pull it out, and our staff can't get in and out of the building. So, as police and fire, you can think what happens if you guys can't get in and out of the entrance to the building. So, it's an emergent issue today, and literally, it's two to three a day now that are getting stuck. Some are really good at getting in and out, but there's at least one a day who's getting stuck. We've had all our interior signs on our property destroyed. And so, we're taking our hands to try to prevent them from even getting into our entrance. The vendors who know us know it has to be a half-size truck, and they can easily go around our property. But it's never been an issue until, what they would do is they would go down by the UDF, take a left, and now with that being closed off, there's no place for them to go. Does that make sense? Do you have a visual of what I'm talking about? So, I'm asking, we've asked ODOT, but I'm asking for the township's assistance to try to expedite signs for any way from getting these tractor-trailers from going down that street, because there's no place for them to turn around, unless it's in the middle of the road. Questions? Comments? Thoughts?
I was going to say, Mr. Wright, that's something we can explore opportunities. I know, I know earlier with a lot of construction ODOT was doing, that we had offered signage for some different traffic flow enhancements. Is there something that we can do for the temporary?
Yeah, I think I can reach out to ODOT. What I, what I want to do is just, you know, in any regard, if we're able to, we may be able to provide the signage at a minimal cost, more responsive, as long as they don't throw a fit that we put signage up on their job site. That, that does happen from time to time.
Yes. We told them as well.
So, what I would do is, yeah, and we would reach out to ODOT, and we would certainly express our, our willingness to help facilitate that, that no-truck signage.
If you...
Local deliveries only kind of thing.
Yeah, and like, yeah, and so, we're going to put no, yeah, no semi tractor-trailers or beyond this point on our property. I mean, really, it's, and it's, I was like, why is Walmart holding indoors? So, when Walmart trucks are leaving, they're coming in from, from the other way. They're dropping off, making a left on Glen Estee, following GPS, thinking I can get right back on 275, and they're like, oh, no, I can't make it through.
Yeah, I think there's a couple businesses there still. You've got Sherwin-Williams there. You've got the restaurant, and then you've got, you guys are there. So, it would be a, probably a limit to local deliveries, maybe some very visible orange signage. I'll contact ODOT tomorrow.
Yeah, so, thank you. Take, take an action on that. If you, if you have any barriers that don't, uh, don't get removed quickly for that, please let me know. Get the chief of staff number for ODOT, and I'll put you directly in touch with the chief of staff at ODOT.
We're doing the same thing as well, so I appreciate your guys' help. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Great job. Congratulations on all your...
Thank you. Any further public comments this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll continue to move forward. We've got department reports. At this time, fire and emergency medical service, Austin Clones, fire chief.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. In the month of December, the fire department responded to a hundred and seventy-six fire and service calls, five hundred and fifty EMS details. We made patient contact with five hundred patients, transporting three hundred and ninety-six of those. We completed eighteen hundred and eighty-eight hours of training. We're involved in fifteen public education details, one of those including a collaboration with our police department, giving Santa Claus a tour of the township, which was a great event. We completed seven life safety inspections. We completed seven life safety inspections and 11 inspections with the Claremont County Building Department. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Fire, thank you, Chief Clements. Trustee Dills.
Chief, good job, good job tonight. And can you, can you break it down real quick? You don't have to go into detail, but the history, I, we should've had you do this before we did all the promotions. The history of the Fire Department as far as, we created these captains' positions, what it means, why they were needed. I know all this, but just for anyone that's watching or the audience as well, and just why we just had six captain promotions.
Sure. Yeah, so previously, the captain position was a, we had three captains on shift, so there'd be a 24-hour rotation, and they would be in control of that whole day, if you will. So somewhere in the middle, we kind of met, we threw the negotiation with the union, and instead of making that a one person in charge of the whole day, we need, we need somebody at the station level to have complete control. We have six stations, and we had a lieutenant covering each day. So we have three lieutenants out of each station. So it created this, that's 18 lieutenants, 18 people that are in charge to having that one person we found was much needed, to have a little bit more control out of the station level. So that, so previously, the captain controlled the actual day. Now they're controlling the station, which allowed six promotions here tonight. So we restructured a little bit of the responsibilities in hopes of maybe down the road adding that another layer of promotion to somebody that's in charge of that whole day. But right now, with where we are with myself and the two assistant chiefs, we see more value in that station captain.
Yeah, so basically, you had a couple lieutenants at each fire station.
Correct.
But there wasn't one firefighter that was in charge, if you will. And so now, now this puts each fire station with a name, and they're in charge of that fire station.
Correct.
That's their station, whereas before, you had a couple, and there wasn't one chief, basically, it was a Chief Indian reference there, but like, just as far as there wasn't one person in charge, and now there is.
Correct.
Okay, makes it easier for chain of command as well.
Yes.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Great. And then by just doing this, we don't necessarily need to backfill those positions. We don't need to necessarily go and hire six more firefighters to backfill those positions. We're still in good shape there, correct?
Correct. Yeah, so instead of having 18 lieutenants, 12, or six of those now transitioned to captain. Now we have 12 lieutenants.
Perfect. Good explanation. Appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
Trustee Becker.
No, I'm good.
All right. Hey, Chief Clements, thanks for sharing that. Thanks for sharing the deep dive on that as well, too. And I think it continues to share or show the experience and continuity being vital to our safety services. Thank you. Chief Reese, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. In the month of December, the Communications Center handled 4,813 calls for service for police, fire, and EMS, and 5,091 total calls. Our clerks handled 442 juvenile and adult court-related documents that needed to be processed for court, and they issued 112 court notices to police officers requiring their personal appearance in court. Our records clerks also processed eight Rule 16s for the prosecutor's office, handled 148 records requests, and redacted 27 body camera videos. In the area of public affairs and crime prevention, officers conducted seven public relations events during the month of December, consisting of three citizen riders and one active shooter training at one of our local businesses. We also conducted a shop with a cop event at Walmart. This is the first year that we've collaborated with them. And as often, as, I'm sorry, Chief Clements mentioned earlier, this was our second year doing the Santa tour through the police department, or through the township. We teamed up with the Fire Department this year. I can't tell you what a great community event this was. Our social media was lit up those two days with people requesting Santa's appearance and offering appreciation to the township for doing it, and we're glad to do it. It's a great event. In the area of operations, the Patrol Division took 331 incident reports, 121 crash reports, made 580 traffic stops, issued 203 written citations, issued 407 warnings, made 64 criminal arrests, 95 traffic arrests, and served 71 criminal warrants. The UTPD Honor Guard participated in one event during the month of December, and that was the celebration of life for our service canine chaos that passed away in December. In the area of training, officers attended 56 hours of training in December. And just for clarification, with tonight's hire, we currently have two openings within the police department that we're trying to fill. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Trustee Dills.
Chief, shop with a cop in Santa was a big hit. Nice job. And I don't even know if I told you this, I stopped into one of the 6:00 PM roll calls. Did you, did you hear about that?
I did hear about that.
Okay, you did hear about that. It was unannounced, it was kind of a last-minute decision, and I, but I really appreciate our dispatch center folks because I held them up for about 30 minutes while I was there, and I know that's their shift change, and, but really good dialogue. We're actually talking about the Retire/Rehire Program, and I had some young officers, I had some older officers, and they both were giving me their perspectives. But it was just really good dialogue back and forth, so they did a good job. So, appreciate it, sir.
Thank you.
Trustee Becker.
Yeah, so, Chief, I like reading these investigative call-out reports. I find them fascinating. Some of them are just real head-scratchers. One in particular here kind of jumped at me is interesting. It looks like just excellent police work on your part and part of your people. So it has to do with car wash break-ins. They were, they were getting into the coin boxes, and, and these guys were apparently linked to other crimes in Florence, Colrain, Lebanon, Miami Township, Delhi Township, Butler County, Clinton County, Mount Oro, Pierce Township. Sounds like these guys got around. What can you tell us in terms of, you know, how'd you, how'd you crack this crime ring and, and, you know, put a stop to this? I mean, this, this looks excellent. Very impressed.
I appreciate you asking. This was really just good police work done by our detectives. The greater Cincinnati area has been experiencing a rash of these car wash coin machine break-ins. They're breaking into them, taking the money. And one of the local departments put a suspect license plate out, and in the local intelligence groups, we all had it. And one of our Flock cameras hit down on 125 and 90 Montebasco with that plate driving by. So one of our officers stopped the car. There were some gentlemen in it. We brought them back to the police department to be interviewed. You know, our detectives did a good job of interviewing them and eventually got confessions out of them, not just for our car wash break-ins, but for several of the other jurisdictions. So really, just a good piece of police work, and assisted by the technology, the great technology that we've got now with these Flock cameras, just a good job all the way around.
How many of these Flock cameras do we have in the township?
So we've got, we've purchased 15 of them. 11 of them have been deployed. We're still waiting for four from the company. And we're hoping for a few more from local businesses like TQL that are contemplating to put them in as well. So it's a great investigative tool.
Yeah, sounds like it's well worth the investment. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's all you, Chairman.
Thank you. Hey, thank you, Chief Reese. I'm grateful to hear the Flock cameras paying off as they are to keep our township safe. Have we deployed, so, we gave resolution just recently to allow authorization to operate on highways. Have we deployed that? And are we seeing anything change as far as numbers and imagine it's gonna drive our demand for our police for calls?
So our officers are patrolling at occasion. Are you asking me if we've had cameras deployed?
No, no, I'm sorry, not on the cameras. The authority for our officers to be able to exercise jurisdiction on the highways.
Right. The officers are aware, and we do do some interdiction up there from time to time, especially the officers that are trained to do the drug interdiction.
Okay. All right. So nothing significant as of yet?
Not yet. Not yet, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, Service Department. Patrick Ebride, Assistant Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Cemetery Division, from December 1st to the 31st, 12 barrels performed, generating $7,900. Zero resident, zero resident graves were purchased. Three non-resident graves were purchased, generating $5,100. Zero columbarium niches were purchased. Zero cremation scatting garden arrangements were purchased. We received four foundation orders, generating $1,134, and the total amount generated was Moving on to Parks Division. Park staff continues the daily maintenance on the township buildings and in its parks. Park staff removed all Christmas decorations and lights at the Civic Center. Improvements were made here in this room at the township meeting hall. All wallpaper was removed, and the walls repaired, and the meeting room was repainted. With the Roads Division, a total of 26 potholes were repaired on a total of 10 township roads. A total of 19 work orders were completed on multiple township roads. This includes pavement maintenance, sign installations, and drainage improvements. And Road Department staff continues to assist with repairs and maintenance on all township snow equipment. Facilities maintenance, a list of various maintenance annual repairs were completed at the Eastgate Professional Building, Service Department, and Civic Center. Fleet maintenance. Fleet maintenance made repairs on three police vehicles and 15 service department vehicles. And current staffing levels, 10 maintenance worker ones, three maintenance worker twos, one mechanic, one administrative assistant, one assistant service director, and one service director. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Dills.
Appreciate you very much, Mr. Ebride. Thanks for that explanation. I'll tell you, I thought we got a lot of snow, like 12, 14 inches, and your guys have a very thinkless job. It's tough, and I thought we got a lot. I sent some pictures out to a dear friend of mine up in, like, the Boston area, and then, and then they're like, "No, no, no, that's nothing." But I thought we got a lot. So, but, tough job. And I, it's frustrating, I was trying to remember his name. My neighbor was trying to get out of her driveway, and I hear her struggle, and I go out, and she's stuck in between her driveway and the road. And one of our service guys was plowing the road, stopped, stopped in the middle of the road. Obviously, the roads are not, there's not very many cars on it because there's a whole bunch of snow on the ground. And he gets out, helps me, and we both are out there pushing her vehicle back in her driveway and all that. And so just, he was stopped, and he didn't even know I lived there, you know, and so and then he realized it was me, and we were shooting at Breeze for just a second, then he had to get back to work. But tough, tough job. Talking about, we get one of these snows probably once every six years. I mean, it's, it's very rare. So tough, and, and, and how, do we have any answers, or like, how we don't hit any mailboxes or anything? It's very impressive, very impressive, because it was a lot. So, and no matter what, nobody's gonna be happy. But we did a great job, and I thought, I thought it was just, it was just smooth, it was good, for, given the circumstances, you know, so, for what it's going to put. Just thank you. Please, please pass that on to your guys, that they did a tremendous job. We're all in our houses cozy and warm when they're out there hustling, so it's very appreciative.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Trustee Becker.
Yeah, on that same topic, you know, considering the snowfall we got and the number of complaints that we got from residents, it was minimal.
I was surprised by that, too.
Yeah. I, you know, it was, you know, your team's just been, was very impressive. And it sounded like the, you know, kind of the biggest problems they had was in cul-de-sacs where there's no place to push snow. And then, and then on the neighborhood streets where you have on-street parking, where you can't plow where those cars parked. And then the next day, or, you know, the next business day, they dug themselves out and they left, and now you got a street that looks like one snowplow went down the middle of the street. Well, that probably is what happened because that's all they could do. And then there was a lot of kind of touch-up work, if you will, that occurred over the next few days to get the township cleaned up very well. So just, you know, kudos to your, to your team, here to be commended.
Thank you.
It's all, Chairman.
I know the equipment was a concern two years ago, and one of the first things that we went to work on as a board was making sure you guys had more equipment that was satisfactory, not plow trucks that were rusting. I know there's a long lead time for delivery of those two trucks that came in, right? Tell me just about the new trucks being able to be out and plowing, and I think this is the first big snow event that we would've had with those trucks. So I'd like to just hear a little bit of feedback from, from you and from the maintenance workers on that.
With today's technology and the new trucks, it makes the event way more efficient, cost-saving, and efficiency as far as getting through your route. A lot of your new technology is calibrated, it's digital, as far as putting salt down and brine down, and it's more comfort for the driver as far as the controls. You stop the truck, the spinner and the auger stops versus turning stuff off. So it allows you to get through and be more efficient. And it's amazing how far technology has come with it, you know, compared to when we started. But it's a huge, huge improvement. We really didn't have any truck breakdowns. You had some minor, minor issues that are very minor, that's going to happen, maybe a fitting. So the new trucks really help streamline and make, you know, efficiency way, way more productive for everybody.
Okay. That's great. The employees enjoy?
Oh, yeah.
There we go.
Oh, yeah.
That's great. And do you know how much salt brine we depleted?
Not as of now. It's still being tallied.
Okay.
Because there was some put down, well, as of yesterday.
Okay.
But I'll get that to you.
All right. Thank you. Planning and zoning, Mark McCormick, Director.
Thank you. For the month of December, we had, for enforcement, 63 inspections, five complaints, one complaint that was unfounded, two warning citations, three 15-day non-comp compliance letters, four, five cases resolved, 325 signs removed, nine violations for the month, six re-inspections that occurred, and no nuisances. For permits issued, we had three commercial permits, one change of use, 10 signs, one temporary sales permit, one temporary sign permit, three single-family dwellings, three additions, and four accessory structures, and four permits for pools, for 30 permits for the month, and revenue of $13,826. And then for the Fire Department revenue, we had $1,025. For the year, we had $227,973, which was about $51,000 more than last year. And the primary reason for that, I think, is because we had such high numbers comparatively to last year with the multifamily dwelling units and the commercial permits, which tend to be the permits that are the most costly. So if you, if you did notice the difference, that's really what it was. We only had a difference of like six permits between the two years. So...
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Trustee Dills.
Mr. McCormick, illegal signs removed, all-time low. I'm assuming it's probably because of the snow, and people don't want to put out illegal signs when there's 12 inches of snow on the ground. But good job, great job this month. Appreciate you. And by the way, your explanation in your email when we have these zoning cases, very easy, a fifth grader could understand it, so that's why I didn't call with any questions this time. Appreciate you, sir.
Trustee Becker.
I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick.
Thank you.
Administrator, Mr. Corey Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. I'll be brief because I know we got a lot of business in front of us. So just wanted to compliment the Service Department on really an outstanding job on an unprecedented event. We did have some touch-up issues, a couple minor issues, but they really are to be commended. I appreciate the board, you know, recognizing them, and I've let Matt know that, you know, we have the best guys. I mean, we have the best public works guys, so, bar none. So they did a great job in that. Engineering work on the splash pad and water line that we're partnering with the county on is underway. We actually had a joint meeting the other day, Mr. Ebride, myself, just to kind of coordinate, make sure everything's lining up. Champion's Way sewer line is now basically complete. We have to do some testing on that. We'll have to do some ASBILs and some testing, but that project has continued to move forward successfully. In my report, I noted I was waiting on JED nominations. I actually have those this evening for the JED Board. That's the next step to form the JED Board for JED eight. If you recall, the Board adopted that contract about, I think, a couple of months ago. So, we got the names to bring forward. Just a couple of other items. We did have one zoning case that was tabled that was heard by the Zoning Commission. There's a letter in your packet. They actually, I shouldn't say tabled, they withdrew the request following the Zoning Commission's recommendation. I do have a TIF developer agreement tonight to, regarding the former Mount Carmel Kroger site. There is an item this evening to look at proposed fee schedules for non-residents for use of the Civic Center. Again, we have the resolution regarding the Extended Employment Program. And a GovDeals Resolution, we have to do that annually. You've seen some cones around the Civic Center. We're doing some extensive concrete repairs, both at the park and ride and around the building here to address sort of some spalling and some other conditions that we've had. So, that, that maintenance effort continues. Couple of big-ticket items tonight. There's two insurance renewal, or actually, one's a renewal, one's a new policy, seeking authorization to bind our property casualty. We actually just got the proposal back, so that's positive. That number is reduced somewhat from the agenda item, but we do keep a reserve for policy additions or modifications. And then we have a standalone replacement cyber insurance policy and then social engineering fund transfer fraud to deal with sort of the phishing and other things that I'll have before the Board, both for action to authorize me to bind coverage. And then, one last item. We continue to be in touch with the folks at ODNR for the LWCF grant application. We got through the first round of comments, submitted a desktop review on that. And I think it's still, it's kind of back in their hands now. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Trustee Dills.
Mr. Wright, good job. Appreciate you. Keep it up. Thank you.
Trustee Becker.
I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. We'll continue on. Public hearings. Union Township Overlay Case one dash twenty-five dash O. Mr. McCormick, if you could introduce that case for us.
Certainly. First case is an overlay district plan, Case one twenty-five O. Applicants requesting a overlay plan that involves some relief with respect to the rear setback. The parcel information and the location here on Ferris Road is noted on the slide on the two-point-one acre parcel. And the request involving overlays to establish a storage warehouse building that could be repurposed later on with relief on the setback. Property is located at eleven eighteen Ferris Road, approximately five hundred feet northeast of McMahon and Ferris. Zoning of the property is industrial. Everything around it to the northwest and east is industrial, to the south is residential. In the comprehensive plan, the property is acknowledged to be in the box fluxed and road commercial corridor, which is the corridor that is the primary location for low-intensity light industrial and manufacturing operations in the township and is the primary area for industrial and heavy commercial warehousing activities. In terms of other items here, the applicant acquired the subject property and built the principal structure in nineteen eighty-eight. And since that time, it made additional improvements in nineteen ninety-eight for accessory building and more recently for commercial alterations in two thousand and twenty. Since the applicant's purchase of the property, it's been his intent to preserve the flexibility of uses and to maintain and maximize the property's multipurposes space. Here is the proposed overlay plan to indicate where the proposed structure would be. The rear setback would, is where the relief is requested at about a foot and a half. At the time that I last spoke with the applicant, they, he was having the property surveyed to make sure that the line was where he thought it was. And I think that foot and a half that he's asking for is the most that he would need. The size of the building that he's looking for, again, is intended to be, allow him the flexibility for, for storage and also to maybe convert for an industrial purpose, either for himself or for someone else who might locate on the property at a later point in time as he has space for himself and, and on the property and also for companies that lease from the building and part of the property. Applicants indicate the proposed size of the building is commensurate to the area that he has space needed for the storage and proposed uses. The two thousand, five hundred and ninety-two square foot building also allows for the parking maneuverability of large trucks and trailers that are on the property. And the applicant's proposal would allow for the expansion of the business operations on the property, potentially for production facility use on, for future potential endeavors. The request appears to be generally consistent with the comprehensive plan and increases the investment associated with the area. It's also ancillary and support for the commercial uses in the general area. And the relief is considered reasonable by staff. You can see what the proposed building elevation looks like, which is very similar to what's in the area as you'll see on the slides here in a moment. The area here behind the store, accessory structure and little trailer is the area where the proposed improvements would be. This is looking from north-northeast next to the property. The conditions, this is looking from the front of the building across the street, south-to-southeast. This is looking from the back of the existing building, office building, towards the area in question, which is on the right-hand side of the slide. There's a existing concrete pad there that the applicant would like to use. This is looking from northeast to east. The site would be on your left. And this is looking from that area across the property to the southwest. And this is looking from approximately the site area back towards the main building, the rear of the building. In terms of the modifications that we would need to address, any concerns from other departments and agencies, we'd need to potentially provide a landscaping plan with details to acknowledge the proposed types, sizes, and locations of plants, lighting plan, if applicable, with any changes and assignage plan, if applicable, which at this time is not expected. Disregard the survey legal description, that's a, that was supposed to be taken out. The, the only other item was that the site plan would ultimately need to meet the zoning requirements in accordance with Article eleven, Section eleven thirty-one. I had no written comments on this case and am prepared to try to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick.
Mr. McCormick, good job explaining. I got none. Good job, thank you.
Questions at this time?
Oh, sorry, Mr. McCormick, I do have one, I'm sorry. Was there anyone that opposed it at the zoning case?
This did not go to.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. That's right, that's right. My apologies, my apologies.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, so at this time I'll open Case one-two-five dash O to the public. We'll take any proponents of this case at this time. Yes, sir. I gotta get your name and address for the record and where you're in. This is a public hearing.
William Michael Shabesta, I go by Mike. Our family partnership owns the property and developed it at eleven eighteen Ferris Road. I live in Anderson Township at eighteen thirty-eight Fireside Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio, four-five-two-five-five.
All right, sir. You swear to tell the truth, told the truth, nothing but the truth, so I hope you got it.
I do.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Floor is yours.
I have wonderful, we have wonderful clients, and I do everything I can to try to keep them. So, this facilitates and makes the property more general purpose. It gives me some personal space where I move my stuff out of the building to accommodate the tenants. So, it's over-planned, over-thought, and hopefully not over-budget. But I think it's in everybody's best interest. The, every foot of that lot is critical for getting large trucks through. So, Mark recommended that I consider reducing the front of the building to the edge of the concrete slab. So, that'll be taken into account with the architect, with the final revisions of the drawing and so forth. And I want to thank Mr. Corey Wright and Mark. They have always known the essence of the code and the zoning requirements and have gone out of their way to provide me guidance on where to start on these projects. So, I really, really appreciate that because, you know, it's a whole series of hurdles. And, you know, it'd be easy just to say, I quit. But I'll try to do my best. So, any questions?
How, how long have you owned that property for?
I would say late nineteen eighty-seven. It was part of a shot estate.
Mr. Shabest- Sebastian?
Shabesta.
Shabesta. Site looks, it's an industrial type of area. I went by it. And you do a good job maintaining it. And so, just, I know you're in Anderson Township where you live. Appreciate you being a good neighbor to Union Township. So, we encourage businesses like you that truly care about your property. I can tell you do. And so, just know I appreciate that very much.
Thank you. I grew up in Buffalo, taught at Claremont and downtown. And we try to be the best on the whole Ferris Road.
I agree.
The driveway's sixty feet wide instead of twenty-five feet. And it all, it's a long-term approach to everything. I mean, you pay now or you pay later, and it's better to do the best you can going in.
Just, just know that we, we love business owners like you that want to be good neighbors, want to keep their property clean, wanted to look sharp. Yours does, it looks good. For, you know, yeah, so, just, well, well done. I appreciate it. I don't think we have any problems here tonight, so for what it's worth, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Trustee Becker.
Good.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Is there any other proponents for this case? Any opponents? All right, seeing none, we'll close this public hearing and open it to the Board for discussion.
I've got, it's pretty straightforward on that.
Trustee Becker.
We haven't made the motion yet.
All right. So, we'll entertain a motion. So, entertain a motion to approv- to approve Case one-two-five-zero in accordance with Section one-three-one-zero of the zoning resolution board to approve with the five recommendations for the focus area overlay district application.
So moved.
Now I second. Jumped the gun.
Hearing no further discussion, roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loog?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, sir. Mr. McCormick, if you could introduce the zoning case one-seven dash eight-six dash Zulu.
Thank you. This particular case, the applicant, Evans Engineering, is requesting approval of a major amendment to an approved planned development district for the parcel number listed here on the slide at forty-three. Address is also at forty-three seventy-five Ferguson Drive on a one-point-four-two-five acre parcel. Their request involves the establishment of a mixed-use commercial development with a proposed aggregate building area of approximately sixteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-four square feet over two stories. Subject property is, again, located there on Ferguson Drive, right there next to the Roundabout, between I-Cults and Ivy Point. The subject property is currently zoned planned development, surrounded by planned development except to the north where the properties are zoned business. In terms of the comprehensive plan, the property falls within the Ivy Point mixed-use corridor and is an area that is identified as appropriate for Class A office structures and developments with structures composed of high-quality materials, cohesive and attractive elevations, signage, multiple-story structures, and with development occurring in a manner that's respectful of existing investment in the Ivy Point Commerce Park. And also calls for mixed-use development, defo cering sense of place, pedestrian connectivity, accessibility, enhanced streetscapes, monument style signage, and so forth. The Board of Trustees originally approved the portion of the sixty-five acres that were originally involved with this case as a commercial P E in nineteen eighty-six with a P E major amendment in two thousand. Both of these approvals expired. In June of two thousand and six, the trustees approved a formal development plan that took into consideration improvements to the Ferguson Drive-Eastgate Boulevard intersection that was designed and planned in conjunction with Ivy Point Business Park. And then that plan set the stage for the construction of the property to the west, the Pediatric Associates of Mount Carmel facility, which involved the creation of the subject parcel, as well as the dedication of required rights of way and the establishment of a twenty-five-foot shared access even from the parcel to the west where the pediatric business is located, parallel with the road to this particular property. This is the proposed site plan overlay. The applicant's proposal and staff's opinion is generally consistent with the recommendations of the adopted land used planned the overlay district. The proposed building is sixteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-four square feet. It is called currently The Cove, with retail space planned for the first floor, including a drive-through area for a restaurant or coffee shop on the west side of the building and office-based plan for the second floor. Final layout designs are intended to be complementary with the current development of the Ivy Point Commerce Park with similar, similar materials to be used and high-quality materials, providing that cohesive and attractive design and significant landscaping and limited signage. Talked about the access here, which you can see that would come in from the adjacent parcel. And that is, I think, primarily just to get people there away from the Roundabout. There is a proposed right-in, right-out in the northeast portion of the property. That will have to be approved by the county engineers' staff. And we have staff comments on that here in a moment that I'll come back to. Signage package was not included. Eventually, if the project moves forward, we would need to have and approve the signage standards for monument signage and wall-mounted signage. And the dumpster area would need to be adequately screened. This is the picture rendering of the proposed building. Here again is the layout, and here's some of the landscaping plan, which would be modified a little bit to include some landscaping around the dumpster if there wasn't vegetation that was preserved there. In accordance with Section six-eighty and to six-eighty-seven of zoning resolution, the Board's role here is to motion to approve, approve some modification or deny the applicant's request to approve a major movement to the P E. Here are the site pictures before all the snow. This is looking west from the existing access towards the new children's facility. This is looking northeast in the other direction. This is looking from north-northeast. And this area, this green space is where that new access would come in and go to the property on the, to the east of this pediatric property. This is looking north-northeast, coming in off that access. This is looking towards the end of the pediatric property, northeast, towards the New Access Drive. Site would be directly in front of you and primarily on the left. This is looking from northeast to north, northwest to northeast across the property. This is looking across the property, southeast Ferguson Drive. This is looking southwest from, from the site, approximately in the area where the proposed right-in, right-out would be. And this is looking northeast from Eastgate Boulevard in that same area where the right-in, right-out is proposed to be. In terms of recommended modifications, the applicant would need to address concerns of the other departments. The right-in, right-out access would be approved. And the staff had found that the curb, a curb barrier must be installed so that people wouldn't try and turn left there because they will if they can. Applicant would have to verify all proposed building materials, which appear to be, meet the definitions of the traditional building material, but we had some question about some of the information. Applicant would need to provide some additional details for landscaping plan, including street trees. Applicant would need to install a sidewalk further along Eastgate Boulevard to run along the new access road to the southwest corner of forty-three seventy-one Ferguson Drive. Applicant would need to remove some parking spaces, primarily where the drive-through area is to the south. Those three spaces and one space at least next to the dumpster in the back so that there's no vehicular points of conflict in those areas. Lighting plan would need to be revised, signage plan would also need to be submitted. And of course, any plan ultimately that gets submitted would have to meet the requirements for site plan in Article eleven. I do not receive any written comments on this case, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Trustee Dills?
I got none.
Trustee Becker.
I think it's just a very attractive building. I think it really complements the area. Looking forward to it.
All right, this is a public hearing, so at this time we'll open case one-seven-eight-six-zulu to the public for any proponent testimony. If you're interested to provide proponent testimony, please identify yourself.
Not all once.
There we go.
I hope that you said I didn't have to do this.
That's fine, if you provide your name.
Chief Reese, I just want to apologize for some false alarms lately at our Ferris Road. Your officers are always great at coming out, but we're working on the guardian protection. Hopefully, we'll send you guys some pizzas, so anyway.
If you want to provide your name and address for the record.
Kevin Padgett, I'm owner of K E P Electric here locally in the township. We've been here for, oh, go ahead.
I just, I was going to get your address, but you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? So I hope you got it.
I do.
Thank you. I think your address is where?
I live in Pierce Township, my home's in Pierce Township. I grew up in Withamsville, moved here in nineteen seventy. Spent the last fifty years either living in the township.
Sir, I'm sorry to interrupt, but as a point of the public hearing, I have to get your actual, a mailing address.
Thirty-five-eleven Mullins Way Road, it's Cincinnati, Ohio, four-five-two-four-five.
All right, thank you so much.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Thank you, go ahead, back to you.
Grew up in the township, love it, went through the school district here barely, but I did make it. So became electrician, you know, forty years ago, opened up a business on Bach Buxton Road. It was great seeing the fire department. I remember when it was, it was all volunteer, so like the gentleman behind me here. So I've been here a long time, so love the district, love the township, just really wanting to, you know, give back, build some more properties here and provide, as my daughters tell me, some healthy eating options in Claremont County, so that's what we want to do. We want to build a beautiful building on the site. We bought this from Chuck Kabicki, who passed away last week, I think some of you probably know that. Might have been his last sale, but you know, great man, another, you know, great developer in our county, so anyway. Just want to put the building together, I've been in construction a long time. We've got to obviously follow zoning rules and building department rules. We've got a great architect and engineer, civil engineer, so you know, I think we can get the project done.
Wonderful, thank you, Mr. Padgett. That's exciting, I think it's a beautiful-looking building. And you're referencing wanting to offer some healthy eating options. You're talking obviously in reference to tenants there. Is there any, or if you can share, is there any, anything perspective that you want to share on that?
Not, we haven't, you know, we've spoke to a few people, but we're just kind of, you know, kind of keeping the options. Obviously, we want to make sure we can build the building before we make promises, so. But, you know, we've got some really neat, you know, I can tell you, we don't want any franchises or chains going in this place, so we don't need it, so we want to really bring some healthy food options to the county here.
That's awesome, that's wonderful, that's something that's really, really needed. I'm glad to see people taking more awareness of their eating habits. I bring that up to say, Mr. Wright probably will be able to help or connect you with, he's often getting calls, so if you haven't talked with him already, there might be something that he's aware of that this provided this pass as a move forward, that this is a good fit. I don't think you're going to have any issues with it passing a move forward tonight, though, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, and we want to be as supportive as we can.
Right, appreciate it.
Trustee Dills?
I do, yeah, thank you, Mr. Logue. So first, what was your last name?
Padgett, P-A-D-G-E-T-T.
Okay, so let me make sure I got it right, the, Mr. Padgett, beautiful building, love it, good job. It's mixed-use, so obviously it sounds like the first floor is probably going to be retail, restaurant or something, whatever.
Correct.
Any idea what the second floor is going to be?
I've got, my CPA is over on Beachmont, and he wants to move over that direction.
So basically offices?
Yeah.
Got it, okay, okay, perfect. And I know Mr. McCormick mentioned we have to get the engineer's approval for the entrance, coming in and out, things like that. We've got a great relationship with county engineer, so for what it's worth, anything we can do to help you move things along. One thing I can't stand is when government takes too long and just drags their feet. But Mr. Wright, he's got a great relationship with Jeremy Evans, our engineer. Whatever we do to help you, let us know. Great build, love location, I agree with your daughters, we need much better restaurants in Union Township, and so hopefully this helps, I think it will, so.
Thank you.
I don't see why you would not get our full support and backing on this, so congratulations, good job, absolutely.
Trustee Becker?
I'm good. Or shall I say second?
You're good, thank you.
I'll hold on that.
Mr. Padgett, as you're presenting this, and we have to stay very focused on the public hearing of what you're putting in front of the board as far as the action in front of us tonight. But I kind of want to go off that path a little bit and ask, are there any barriers or any issues that you foresee for this project for yourself that's outside of that? The reason why I bring it up is because you really bring a project forward that I think all of us have been talking about and wanting to attract and wanting to bring to the township, and that's exactly what you're bringing, this type of product that you're bringing. So we want to see you be successful, is all I'm trying to say. If there's any barriers that do come up, you're happy to share anything now, or just say, get in touch with Mr. Wright, and we'll make sure that whatever it may be, we may have a smart solution to help in the system.
Yeah, I mean, that's great, and they've been very helpful at every level of every property I've owned in the township, so you've got a great department, so really good.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for your time. At this time, is there any other proponent testimony to be offered? Any opponent testimony? Okay. If you could give your name and address for the record, and I'll swear again.
Sure, my name is Dr. Michael Chamberlain with Pediatric Associates of Mount Carmel. My home address is twenty-twelve Berkshire Club Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so I hope you got it?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
We are also excited, we are the neighbor just next to this development, and we are also excited that there's something going in there because we feel that Union Township does need more development. Our concern is about the access that goes through our property. Because we're a busy pediatric office, we have lots of families with small children that are accessing our office. We've been in business for fifty years, we've been at that location for eighteen years, and we feel that that drive in front of our property could be detrimental to both our business and to our families. The congestion it creates at the access point for us is going to be difficult, and we, so that is our concern. So while we're excited that we're going to have a neighbor finally, our concern is about the traffic. With six tenants, I believe, we're concerned that there's going to be quite a bit of traffic there, especially one that has a drive-through, and the number of cars going through that could be very difficult for us, our families, our staff, getting in and out of our building.
All right, thank you. Trustee Dills?
Doctor, by the way, thank you for coming tonight. Are you to the left or north?
To the left. So there's a drive that will go in front of our building, connect to our driveway, and that'll be access to Ferguson.
Mr. McCormick, what's your thoughts?
So I think you're the gentleman I met with when I went out to visit the site and put up the sign and take pictures. And when I went out there, I could see how the drive in that location could be very awkward to have an entrance and two exits right there together. And so I went into the building, asked if they knew anything about the hearing, and after the, I guess, second or third person, they connected me to you.
Right.
I talked to the doctor here about the idea of possibly going through their, using their entrance and cutting through their parking lot and having like a shared drive that connects in that way. And he had indicated that that was even less desirable because they have small kids and families.
Carrying babies through our parking lot, that would not be.
So the problem is, when the property was set up and, you know, as alluded to in the staff report earlier, in, I think it was two thousand six, the, when that case came in for the pediatric practice, they deliberately made the access where it is on, where this drive is shown, there's a twenty-five-foot easement there. And at that time, the plan resembled what we're seeing now built for the pediatric office. So it's not something that I probably would have advocated for if I would have looked at it today, but that's what they did, and because of the way they did it, the only other access they could potentially come in and use would be the ride-in, ride-out that you're seeing, which I don't know what the engineer's office would say to that. Or you'd have to come in from perhaps maybe the Mercy piece or the Union piece, and I don't know how feasible that is. But in reality, in nineteen eighty-six, or I'm sorry, two thousand six, when the pediatric property was created and that plan was approved, they deliberately set up the access to be where it is here. So as much as I want to say, and I think we talked about this when I met with you out there, I don't really like it, it's what they set it up to be. And I don't know that we can necessarily make them go anywhere else because it was deliberately set up to be in this location.
So basically, to the right of the parking lot, we have an entrance, exits there, and we also have one cutting through their parking lot as well at the very top of their, well.
So the one that was set up is here, the one that we don't know what the engineer's office is going to say.
I can't imagine the engineer's office turning that down, right there. But let's just say they do, for argument's sake, then what?
Yeah, I mean, this is here no matter what, and the purpose of it, the easement is for access. I mean, otherwise you'd have to try to gain access through one of these other two properties here. And I don't know if pushing the access over this way would make any difference or not, and that would require, this is the Mercy property here, I believe this is the Union.
So that, does that road already exist, as I said, the road, the driveway already exists?
It does not.
Here?
It does not?
No.
Okay.
That's, so that's what I was pointing out in the slide here. Basically, it's going to go from curb to curb, kind of in the middle of this.
I see why you don't like it.
Do you see how that would be difficult for people coming out, people coming out of our business and then people coming out of that?
If someone's turning right into your lot with someone behind them on Ferguson Drive, as someone's exiting from Padgett Properties, there is going to be a traffic accident there.
That's our concern.
What's, you're not an engineer, doctor, I know that.
That's true.
Go back to the slide, Mark, the one that shows, yeah, okay, so I want this to go through. I think it's a good, good for our township, but you are a longtime standing neighbor.
We've been in Union Township for over fifty years.
What do we do here, what do we do here?
Again, I'm not an engineer as well. So access, I mean, you know, the access closer to I-Cults, if that could become, you know, moved down a little, I don't know if that's possible, because then it would be better access for them.
So.
But again, I'm not an engineer.
I've got, I've got, trustee Dills, if you're good for me, and I've got this, your comment and this whole process written down. Trustee Becker, do you have any comments for the doctor?
What I'd like to just.
I don't want to dismiss him.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not at all.
Okay, so I'm going to talk to you soon.
I just want to address it, I just want to give him an opportunity.
Oh, okay, yeah, your pleasure.
I've got your note of, trust me, I'm on top of the access point as well.
Yeah, and I think you're starting to answer my question before I even asked it, but my question is, how would you like to see it reconfigured, what would be your preference?
That's a hard one, it is sort of an interesting-shaped lot next to the traffic circle or near the traffic circle, so access is challenging, and since I'm not an engineer, I'm not sure what the best plan is. But I just wanted to voice my concerns about our business and our families that we have served and having to make sure we have a safe place for them to visit us.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, thank you, trustee Becker. I want to see if there's any other proponent testimony, and I want to continue with the doctor, but. Is there, is there any other points that you have for?
Well, I guess one other thing was about the type of development, that since there's going to be six tenants there, that's going to increase the traffic. I counted over seventy parking spots in there, so the type of business that is going to be located there, because of the difficult access, I think that's a difficult match in my mind, my non-engineer brain.
Thank you, doctor.
Sure, if he brought his engineer up, can you call him up?
Yeah.
A proponent?
Yeah. Mr. Padgett, the proponent testimony, do you have your engineer with you tonight, or can we? Can you give your name and address for the record, and I'll swear again?
I'm Chris Zembroch from Evans Engineering. My home address is seventeen-twelve Highwater Road, Bromley, Kentucky.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. So you've heard some of the questions or concerns here with access. I want to open the floor up to you as far as what perspective or thoughts you have on how things currently are, or hearing that feedback and how you've already considered it, and we're just missing something because, I mean, I've sat here, handled a lot of public hearings. I love this type of investment and this type of plan coming forward, but I absolutely see the configuration that is difficult to try to work with, so. Yeah, want to hear your thoughts on that.
I understand the difficulty in the layout, that's an existing easement, so we really can't really argue the right to use it, but I understand that it would be tricky there. And just sitting here looking at that, I'm starting to wonder if we could still use that easement maybe halfway, put a curve in there so it's a separate entrance, but then we don't really want another access closer to the roundabout.
Right.
So.
The roundabouts make it difficult.
Yes, yes it is. Using this easement wasn't really, I thought it was not a concern coming into this for debate about the ride-in, ride-out, but.
Mr. Dills? Is it Mr., is it Simbok, Zembroch?
Zembroch.
Zembroch. Let me show you, someone disrespected, Zembroch, okay. Okay. That, so that easement, it's already been there, already in place, designed for this, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so let me ask you this question. Hypothetically, if we were to prove this as-is, and if the engineer's office, assuming they played ball and approved that entrance in the top right corner, could that be your only entrance? Would the business survive and be okay as far as traffic and parking and all that coming in and out and not using easement? Or are you needing both?
You need Mr. Padgett, you need Padgett probably for part of the business question there.
The original thought when we purchased the property from Mr. Kabicki was to not even use that right away. As we started looking at the entrance to it, we felt like customers that were coming, I guess, is that eastbound, Mr. McCormick, eastbound, would have to take the other, go all the way around the block to come in the right-in, right-out. People coming from thirty-two can get into that with the roundabout use anyway, so it's not, it's not about the traffic.
If I'm going eastbound, I can't get in your driveway.
That's, that's, that's why we wanted that.
Well, that's, yeah, that's your say.
So in my world, just sitting here thinking and understanding what the pediatrics owner's talking about is, we really only need one lane to get down there. So it could just be people coming from the eastbound traffic that could pull in because that's, that's the only reason we would want to use that right away to begin with.
Joe, you should talk about, if you're going to the right, and if that, if that easement's not there, you're going to have to literally go up to the next intersection, do a U-turn basically, and come back to get into that main street.
Mr. McCormick, do you have a different image of that, because the scale is right on top of that? I want to look at like that. Can't, if you're going eastbound, is that actually clear of the traffic, you know, the dividing triangle, do you even turn left? I don't think it is.
Mr. Look, there's a dedicated left turn there.
Oh, there is a dedicated left turn.
And I'll just, just for the board's edification, I was here in two thousand six when Mount Carmel Pediatrics built that building, and that easement was specifically plotted to ensure that both of these lots had full movement from both the south and east and from Eastgate Boulevard. And that access easement was specifically put there for this purpose because you cannot put a full movement intersection. purpose, because you cannot put a full movement intersection or a full movement driveway in the roundabout throats or in the ball of the roundabout. That's why that is there. That is the specific reason why that is there. And there's actually a dedicated left turn lane, because I remember the conversation when the county was developing Ivy Point or whatever we're calling that segment, I think that's Ferguson, that, that part's Ferguson, that part's Eastgate Boulevard. So Ferguson there, they had, because there was some conversation on the length of the median and how to fit the dedicated stacking into that for the turn lane. So that is why that was configured that way. I think the easement's actually on the survey, the recorded land survey, it runs with the land, it was part of the pediatrics plan in two thousand six, it was always contemplated to be used. I think it's a positive discussion between the two property owners as to how to mitigate, you know, potential impacts of that. It, it sounds like to me that the dedicated left in is probably more important to use than them leaving.
Correct, correct.
So, so I would say there's probably a way for us to work with them to refine the design on that, to make sure that access point is preserved, and yet, that, that, so that his site is fully viable in that, without adversely impacting the pediatrics facility. Whether that's through speed control devices, whether it's through, you know, a one-way-in configuration with some additional landscaping and buffering or something like that, making sure there's curb there, making sure maybe some bollards, you know, to fully protect that or whatever. But, but that is specifically why that easement is there, and that's why it was set up like that in two thousand six.
I think that helps clarify a large portion of that for, for me. The easement would only be the one-way in, as in, you're coming eastbound, you're using the dedicated left turn lane to turn in to the entrance, and then you're going to make the quick right in the easement, and that's a one-way. Because easement, you can't turn left in, correct?
It, so that easement right now is too, I think it's set up to be, Mark, what is that, twenty feet?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five feet wide. So a couple of things, you know, you can reduce the width of that to probably a twenty-two foot profile, if you wanted to make, you know, now it's questionable whether the, the turning, whether there would be a sufficient turning radius to make the, the, the left out onto that, so I think there's some merit to looking at it from a right, from a left in only there, assuming the county would approve that. And then you could reduce that drive aisle width to like a traditional twelve-foot wide, or even a sixteen-foot wide service lane, which would be a one-way in striped, and then enhance the buffering between the backside of the curb of the parking lot and the access drive that goes into the property. I think you could do that, and then maybe put some bollards or some other decorative things in there. What we would want to look at, and again, work with the engineer, work with the county engineer, to make sure that there's an appropriate, and maybe hit, maybe the access drive into pediatrics gets modified slightly so that that turn is in or it's this way. I think there's, there's fifteen different ways to do that, and there's a lot, there's guys that work in CAD that can put this thing on an auto turn and look at these things and make this decision very quick, very easy, and I think it's something we can handle administratively amongst and between the parties, so.
Go ahead.
If that were one direction to where it goes.
I gotta, I gotta get you to the podium for.
If that were one direction to where there was traffic that was passing in front of our office, just heading towards your building, one direction that way, not bidirectional, that would be much better. And I understand, we want new development in our area, we're just worried about the safety and traffic there.
I think that, I think that's one thing we just ironed out, that that would only be, or at least that's the recommendation we're going to take forward.
People coming the other way would be, I think, the hazard.
Yes.
People coming from your property towards our property would be that potential hazard. But if that's just an in route to yours, I think we could live with that.
To the point, it, it, they can leave and go any direction, because they can go out the right out and then navigate the roundabout and go back the other way.
Exactly, through the, the.
So that, that really solves.
Exactly. So, so there's still ways to get out of the parking lot.
I am confident that Mr. McCormick and our office can help navigate these waters, so.
All right. Thank you for the additional, any additional comments? Is there any additional opponent testimony? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, open it to the board for discussion. Trustee Dills?
I would agree with.
I would agree with the doctor.
The only issue is, is for some reason, I don't think they would, is that the engineer denies, the county engineer denies this. But Mr. Paget has every right to that easement. So, so if the county engineer denies that new entrance, I, I, I mean, they, they knew it when they bought that property. The easement's been there since day one, it's on, it's on the original drawing plans. Let's hope, and I'm, I'm confident the county engineer is going to approve that new entrance. We'll, we'll, we'll put some friendly pressure on the county engineer as well. Life is good, but if for some reason they still say no, I, I, my opinion is, I, I hate it, I don't like it, but I think it still should move forward, if, if the easement is the only one-way in, one-way out. I don't think that's going to be the case, gentlemen, I don't. I think the county engineer's going to approve that new entrance. And, and life is good, and we can make that, things work. But even if not, I mean, it's not, not the best situation, but I mean, it's, it's there, it's, it's been in the original drawings. So, it's my thoughts.
Trustee Becker?
Mr. Wright's confident that he can work this out to the satisfaction of all the parties, and I'd like to move forward and let that play out.
I agree.
All right, gentlemen, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve case one seven dash eight six dash Zulu with the recommended eight modifications. And Mr. Wright, do you need to add anything additionally there for the?
No, just to, maybe just make a note that staff, staff to work with the applicant adjacent property owner in the county to coordinate access. We'll do everything we can.
And with the additional note for the staff to work with the applicant and the additional property neighbor to work with county on the easement access for the subject property.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Mr. Paget.
Thank you, Mr. Paget, congratulations, and thank you, doctor, for, for that testimony.
Did you need to get?
I didn't get it, that's okay.
They'll get it from the recording?
Yeah.
All right, gentlemen, moving forward with the agenda this evening, old business, having none, new business, consent agenda, the approval of minutes, approval of payments prepared by Mr. Campbell, and approval of monthly financial report prepared by Mr. Campbell. And those approval of minutes are December tenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four special meeting, and January second, twenty twenty-five. Do we have that motion for approval, the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving forward, the motion agenda. Mr. Wright, can you introduce the approval of purchase orders?
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Logue. So we got a lot of, a lot of purchase orders this, this evening. These are all housekeeping items, first of the year things. So, purchase order for a hundred thousand dollars to Bricker Graden, this is for our legal fees for twenty twenty-five. Purchase order to Alta Fiber for township food and service for twelve months, thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars. Purchase order to Alta Fiber for fiber optic services to various township facilities for twelve months in the amount of seventy-six thousand, oh twenty-nine. Purchase order to Carmel County Transportation Improvement District for our annual contribution requirement, the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. Purchase order to Kevin Carpenter, he is our signage removal person, this is for signage removal for twelve months, the amount of twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. Purchase order to Dart Points Operating Company LLC, this is for twelve months of service for our cloud backup and disaster recovery redundancy as a service for the amount of forty-two thousand dollars. Purchase order to Duke Energy for the Civic Center Gas and Electric for twelve months, the amount of a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Duke Energy for lighting district payments for twelve months and the amount of seventy thousand dollars. And just to note, those are assessments that are collected semi-annually by the township. Mr. Campbell gets the bills, those are, it's just part of, and we, we look at those periodically. Purchase order to DSD Advisors for miscellaneous professional lobbying services, the amount of twenty-seven thousand dollars for twelve months, it's full year. Purchase order to Highland Group for our twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six liability property and casualty insurance. We have a note in here, it's two hundred and ninety thousand. Just to give you an idea, our renewal initially came back high, we right priced that, had our agent go to workforce, it came back significantly less, but we will reserve that for future policy additions, modifications, or whatever. Pitney Bowes Global Financial Services Retail Postage Meter, that's for the retail postage we sell off the meter downstairs in the contract unit for forty-eight thousand dollars. United States Postal Service Retail Postage, the amount of fifty thousand dollars. Again, those are stamps that we sell, you know, through our contract unit at a profit to the township. Verizon Wireless, full year, twelve months, cell phone services, all departments, seventy-four thousand, four hundred dollars. Purchase order to Vigilant LLC for cybersecurity and monitoring, is a third-party network security vendor, in the amount of fifty-two thousand dollars for twelve months. Charter Communications Holdings, this is for monthly subscriptions at various township facilities, internet, et cetera, nineteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. Second purchase order to Highland Group for the cyber social engineering, the social engineering policies, the amount seventy-five thousand dollars. Again, that quote is significantly less based on the renewal. We have a purchase order Motorola Solutions to, for four new radios, the amount of twenty-five thousand, oh eleven, ninety-five. Purchase order to Wex Bank for estimated fuel usage, the amount of twenty-six thousand dollars. That is our fuel purchasing card system. Bachman, Bachmann's Inc. for the Civic Center HVAC maintenance agreement, the amount of twenty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. Bachmann's Inc. to the, for the Ferguson Drive building, eight, maintenance agreement, the amount of twenty thousand, oh forty. And Sedgwick Claims Management Services in the amount of twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars, and that is our group reading fee for our workers' compensation. And that concludes the purchase orders.
Anything, Mr. Wright, trustee Dills?
Uh, nothing.
Trustee Becker?
Nope.
All right, gentlemen, entertain a motion to approve purchase orders.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Wright, could you introduce the tax increment financing agreement?
Certainly. Requesting a motion to approve the tax increment financing developer agreement with OV fourteen Mount Carmel LLC. This is a tax increment financing agreement, this is a TIF that was created in twenty twenty-four on the former Mount Carmel Kroger site. This reimbursement agreement provides for reimbursement of eligible infrastructure improvements that are really related to the redevelopment of the site. Predominantly, the costs are for roadway improvements, there have to be some access roadway modifications to what was built, I don't know, my memory fails me, eight years ago, six years ago, whatever. So they have to modify some things to achieve the access that's being mandated by the state and the county. So this would provide for reimbursement on that. Again, it's a percentage of our net, so we make the schools whole on this TIF, and then we have a proportion, and then we make that available for developer reimbursement, so.
Trustee Dills?
I got nothing.
Trustee Becker?
I'm good.
Entertain a motion to approve the tax increment financing agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, before we go any further, can you take a five-minute bio break?
Sure.
It's been two, almost two and a half hours.
Sure. Entertain a motion for recess.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
We're taking a five-minute recess at eight twenty.
We're taking a five-minute recess at 8:20.
I thought you did.
I'll entertain a motion to return from recess.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loog?
Yes.
We resume the meeting at 8:26 PM.
All right. Mr. Wright, if you could introduce the item three, establish non-resident Union Township Civic Center room fees and gym fees.
Sure. So I have a fee schedule before these, this evening. We take a lot of pride in the fact that, you know, this building is free for our residents and businesses. Unfortunately, with the wear and tear on the building, and I forget to mention nonprofits, local government agencies, with the wear and tear on this building, though, and the increasing competition from, we have perpetually increasing demand from non-residents, it was suggested that we would increase the fee schedule to, to suggest a fee schedule for non-t township businesses and non-residents to sort of provide a mechanism to, for that and to recognize and continue to try and keep this facility free for our residents, businesses, and nonprofits. So that's what we have in front of us. You know, again, I, I would guess that I'm, that our staff are going to get at least 37 questions about who's a resident, who's a non-resident, how do you determine it? It's all about who's on the reservation. It's all about, there's a review process. It's different for the gyms than it is for the meeting rooms. And again, if we need to tweak the policy to further define that, we have the ability to do that administratively, so.
If you get 37 questions on that about who's resident, who's not a resident?
Right.
And if that comes in, I would say, let's, let's offer a volunteer opportunity or something for somebody to be like the resident checker outer person.
Checking, checking driver's licenses.
Yeah. It sounds like a good way to get involved.
So I appreciate your support on that. That gives us a chance to generate a little bit of revenue on the rooms and not have disparate impact on our residents and our business community.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Trustee Dills?
No questions for him.
Trustee Becker?
Yeah, so how does this, how do these proposed fees compare to area townships?
Well, I've got, we've had a lot of research done on that. Actually, Mr. Burkey did a lot of research, and I had asked him to do that. And I have to look for my, should I bring it with me? Bring it with me? I did, actually. So other communities, if you look at what, sort of what other communities have done there, looked at Miami, Miami charges, actually Miami charges hourly rates for their residents and non-residents. Theirs are much higher. It's $500 and $700. And they have a couple of different fee schedules for different sized rooms. Anderson charges $90 to $165 an hour for a resident, up to $220 for a non-resident. Potavia charges $360 for residents and $480 for non-residents. And again, Pierce, they only allow HOAs. Looking at us, we were completely free across the board. So we get a lot of excess pressure because everybody else is charging.
Is everyone, everyone else is charging residents?
They are. And I'm looking at that fee schedule. So, yeah, for example, Miami has an hourly, hourly rate resident, and this is again some of the staff research, it was $100 for a $25 room, 25-person room, Monday through Thursday, and then $500 for the 150-person room, Monday through Thursday, and then they have a premium rate for the large room on Friday and Saturday, Sunday, and then the other, the small rooms are $100. And then if you look at, they have different sized rooms, like one's $100, one's 100 people, one's 19 people, one's 150, 135. Anderson charges residents $90 to $165 an hour for the primary space at the Civic Center, at their Civic Center. And then they have a smaller room, I guess they charge $45 an hour, $65 an hour for a resident, for non-residents, so. So we're, I mean, we're still, even though we're charging, we're lower than anybody else. And this is just a little bit to take some of the pressure off from adjoining, you know, communities. We get a lot of reservations, you know, and it's, non-residents can reserve in the first month, residents have the ability to schedule out a little further, we make it available to them a little earlier. In the event that there's a conflict between a resident, non-resident reservation, resident always gets priority, you know, so there's a little bit of nuance. And our staff, you know, Mr. Burkey does a great job managing the rooms and the gym. It's a lot of work. It is a lot.
Which these fees probably don't even pay for a quarter of the position of what Mr. Burkey puts in on us.
No.
And that's one of those roles where it's, he's basically responsive to user.
Yep. It's demand-based.
So I, Mr. Wright, I know we talked in the, in the past, years ago, of the free cost for residents for having a nominal fee, but I also, just hearing concern from this, I don't like taxes. So anytime that there's a user fee that you can utilize to offset some like cost of having a government building facility, those aspects, I, I like user fees when it helps to drive taxes down, so. Those are some of my thoughts. I know Mr. Becker's got some thoughts like to hear.
Well, I, I'm inclined to think, based on what I just heard, that these fees are not high enough.
That's, I'm with you.
Sort of the approach is dip your toe in the water and see how it goes. We can always bring it back.
I guess, you know, we had this discussion about the cemetery fees, what should they be? And the idea was to be, you know, competitive with, you know, the area, and I guess I would want to use that same logic applied to the meeting room fees, certainly for the, you know, out-of-t township residents.
Mr. Becker, what's your, I mean?
No, I'm not making a proposal.
Free, 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 no cost for residents? I mean, do you have an inclination of?
Um, I'm hesitant to want to charge the residents. However, what I would like to-
Charge them for the cemetery.
Um, yes, good point.
Same logic.
I think there's a little bit of difference, transient use versus a permanent use.
Okay.
I mean, they're buying a deed in the cemetery, it's very different.
Call them barium niches, though, or?
They're there forever.
Right. They're there forever, but.
So I didn't have any questions for Mr. Wright, but I did have comments on this one whenever we get to it.
Happy to hear your comments, trustee Dills.
I'm going to defer to Mr. Wright and Mr. Burkey. They're, they're the ones as far as charging the non-residents. Yeah, there absolutely should be a charge for non-residents. Residents, though, if you both want to make a motion, I'll, I'll just, you know, transparent, I'm going to be against it right now, I'll be a no vote. So I think residents right now, free, no charge. That's why it's awesome to live in a union township, you get a beautiful civic center, and if you're a resident, you get to reserve the gym, the rooms are free. And if it becomes an issue, if the economy tanks, tanks, and it's terrible, and we need to start charging, fine. But as of right now, we're not hurting that bad, and I think that should be a benefit to live in a union township, so. I'm against charging residents. I like this proposal. As far as what we want to charge non-residents, I'm 100% defer to the experts. Mr. Wright, Mr. Burkey?
Mr. Dills, you see that?
Yeah, and, but, yeah, I mean, we can always up it later or change it later. That's what I'm saying. Right now, I think we're okay charging the residents. For me, I'm going to be against that, but we can always change these fees at a later time.
I'm going to update them.
Yeah. That's just my, my opinion, so.
Yeah, I'd, I personally like to see it as a, at least on a cycle for review. Mr. Dills is just going to pick out the nonprofit's discretion of admin.
Do we, I can provide a little bit more clarity on the discretion of the admin on the nonprofits.
Well, he called out before, I think, one of the basketball youth programs we charge, would you crack it down to $8 an hour for them to use the gym here in West Claremont, charges $25 an hour or more, $50 an hour on the weekend?
I got so much grief over that from our school board, so I, I mean, I'm not kidding, I got, I made a lot of people upset with that, but I said what I said, and I mean what I mean, and I, I stand by what I said. That we have no youth basketball program in this, in this township, in the school district. We charge pennies on the dollar, and they charge whatever it was.
$25 and $50 an hour.
Ten to 50 times more than we charge, but that's-
Hey, I guess they're-
That's an argument for a different day. I stand by what I said, but I'm not going to make the board mad, because we love our schools, we do. We just differ on opinions on this. What I, I, I say let's, this is just my opinion, I say let's roll with these numbers, and if, if it's still, if we're still having scheduling conflict, and if it's still being bombarded with non-residents, then, it's kind of like a hotel. If you're at 95, 98% occupancy, you raise the rates. If you're at 70% occupancy, you lower the rates. So if we still see that non-residents are still taking advantage of us, then, then we bump it up more, like Mr. Becker said. If, if we see that, hey, it's kind of evening out, and it's all good, then we keep them the same. But right now, we're not hurting for money that much, and I, I just, I think we should just not charge residents right now. That's a really neat benefit to be a resident in a union township, and that's why we're better than Miami and other surrounding areas. So, just, just my opinion.
I think at some point, we ought to consider, when, when it comes to residents, maybe, maybe have them put up a deposit, if not a charge. And my thoughts are on that is, and I guess I don't know how big of a problem this is, but damage does occur. Is that done by residents or non-residents?
Probably both, yeah.
People reserve facilities, whether it be the gym or meeting rooms, and then don't show up. Again, is that residents, non-residents, how often does that happen? I think if some type of financial, again, it could be just a refundable deposit, could help mitigate those problems. So we can talk about all that at a future date.
I like it, as long as it's not much of like an administrative task to do that.
It's all part of the consideration.
Yeah, yeah, I, I like it. And then I, honestly, Mr. Wright, I mean, I think, just make this procedure, every, every year, every six months, bring this up, and let's, let's see how inflation's doing. If we need to bump the prices up, let's bump it up.
And we do that as part of our reorg every year, so, yeah.
Mr. Wright, is, with, with, with bringing Civic Plus online as our website host provider, the reservation process, just as we're going to go down that path, talking reservations, has that now fully been integrated, so it's not a cumbersome, you have to go to the cemetery to do this?
You're asking me questions I'm not, I'm not intimately involved in. I do know this, this is what I'll tell you. I do know they make the reservations through Civic Plus, I do know that they engage that, the people actually look at calendars, that is very positive. So for fee payment, what we would do is just have them come here.
We have the ability to take payment through that website, so that is something to continue, I guess, streamline, but that was the initial vision.
We would work with Mr. Campbell's office to integrate any Civic Plus accounts payable, kind of, you know, for a credit card. The vast majority of these people are probably going to want to use a credit card to do that. We also offer the credit card in the office, they can come in, swipe, do whatever wish them receipt. There's, we'll, we'll implement that. I mean, that won't be a problem. We'll make that happen, one way or the other.
Sure.
All right, thank you. Gentlemen, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the established non-resident Union Township Civic Center room fees and gym fees.
So moved.
Second.
No further discussion, roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loog?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Wright, if you could introduce item four, property casualty liability insurance renewal.
So our property casualty insurance renews on a 1/31 date annually. We got our 2025-2026 renewal back. We did increase some of our property coverages specifically due to escalating construction costs. We want to make sure that we fairly represent on our scheduled property, you know, valuation listing, you know, the values it would take if we estimate, you know, and they also run a TIB on that. And so the bulk of this policy, our prior premium, you know, came in at about 230, actually looks like 241, that included $1 million in cyber coverage. We actually got a premium increase, so we are looking at, let me do some rough math, about 270, let's see, 290 minus 16, so 274, 275. And of that increase, I did, I have notes in my office, some of that's due to the insurance market, you know, hardening. It's about an 8% rate increase, some of that's police liability, you know, your, your government liability policies, that happens across the market. And then about the other five, so 8% of that's, of that 13 is the, just the market, and then the other five is just a reflection of our increased scheduled property values and things like that. So that's one component, so I respectfully ask for motion to authorize me to bind coverage with Highland in the Ohio Plan for the 2025-2026 calendar year. I have an amount not to exceed $290,000. The way they combine these, they actually combine the two premiums into one package proposal. Our net, net will be about $275,000 this year. We did have an accompanying purchase order with that, just so we have some reserve available. So I appreciate your support on that, so I can get us, and the answer to the question, we do not want to let that insurance lapse, not one day, so.
Trustee Dills, you have any questions?
No, sir.
Trustee Becker?
Good.
Roll call, Mr. Campbell. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, do we have a motion to approve?
Roll call. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loog?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Wright, can you introduce the Union Township cyber coverage, social engineering fraud, excess insurance coverage, item five?
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Loog. So when I came back last year, Mr. Campbell indicated to me the state had been in, and there were some recommendations, I believe, from the treasurer's office, that due to social engineering fraud, due to cybercrime continuing to grow, government entities really need to beef up their cyber coverage. So I went back to Highland and our agent there, and I said, what have we got now? And they told me a million bucks. So a million dollars, and we were, we sort of went and did that, I think it was in 2019 or something like that, and that was, that was good coverage then. As our network profile grows, as your exposure grows, as these criminals get better, we want to beef that coverage up. So we looked at a 5 million and a 10 million. The issue was really for us, right-sized 5 million cyber policy, kind of covers any and everything that would happen to us, data breach, whatever. But then we also wanted to get fund transfer fraud, which is what they call social engineering, where somebody sends an email and says, change my account routing number, or makes a phone call to an accounts payable clerk, and they get into the system and they do that. This would provide us with a million dollars per occurrence on fund transfer. So that is a huge thing to have. It's a, we have incredibly robust processes. We were going through that when we were doing the applications. It's, you know, a person comes in, you know, they fill out a form, or they'll fill out a W2, a W9, gets entered into the purchasing system, there's some cross verification, two different clerks, you know, the finance director and then the finance associate both look at those things. Whenever there's a change, there's a callback, or there's always a written and always a verbal. That doesn't mean that bad guys can't get really good at that, so it's always good to be a belt and suspenders kind of thing, so that we're insured in case that does happen. So I'd request authorization to bind coverage in the amount not to exceed $75,000 per year. The actual quote is about 59, it's right around $60,000 total for that. And keep in mind, a little bit of that is blended in. We do get a decrease on our, on our primary insurance because we're carrying standalone policies on that. Policies are with CFC and then with Travelers, so. Appreciate your support.
Thank you. Gentlemen, do we have a motion to approve the Township cyber coverage, social engineering fraud, excess insurance coverage?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Trustee Becker? Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loog?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Corey, if you can introduce the Union Township City of Milford Jed, number eight.
Thank you, Mr. Loog. So we got the names back from the business and the worker names from Cincinnati Children's. So Mr. Becker has graciously agreed to serve as the designated Jed representative for a host of other Jeds for the township, so I took the liberty of volunteering him to put his name on the list again.
Volunteer or voluntold?
And-
I'm from the government, and I'm here to help.
And then, in addition, so the way the initial terms work is the township appoints three members, a township member for two years, a business member for three years, and a worker member for four years. And then those terms, as they renew, we, we change those out or whatever. So Mr. Becker is the township member, Mara Moran Berry is the business member representing Cincinnati Children's, and Alex Hen, who is the worker member, who will be the clinic, clinical manager, I believe- manager, I believe, on site over here at Eastgate. So once the board appoints those, Mr. McCormick and I will work to schedule a meeting and get the Jed Board officially active and the rest of that buttoned up, so.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion to approve the City of Milford Jed, number eight board appointments? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Trustee Dills? Here and done, roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loog?
Yes.
Well, it's getting late, isn't it?
It's a long wait.
It's not water, is it?
It's water.
Gentlemen, moving forward to legislation agenda, Mr. Wright, if you could introduce Resolution 2025-02, Union Township Extended Employment Program adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Loog. So this resolution accompanies a policy document that was prepared to address the issue of attrition and kind of a demographic trough that we've seen primarily in the public safety realm, but really across government agencies. And so this policy was developed, you know, in an attempt to try and recognize that our employees are our best assets here in Union Township, that we invest heavily over these, you know, over the course of decades in their career development enhancement training, and that an opportunity exists to provide both a bridge and mentorship opportunities when we are in temporary recruiting crises or in, you know, where we have these gaps in experience where these experienced personnel can, it's a way for them to stay on and help benefit township out of cost savings to the taxpayer. So, you know, I prepared an executive summary, basically this authorizes, I'll just walk through this, it authorizes to seek memos with the unions that there is a policy, doesn't include the policy, and that they would, they would live by the policy, and that it could be repealed at any time by the board or amended. This has participation rules, anytime you have a policy and you know who's eligible, sets forth procedure, there's some specific requirements and a higher revised code that we have to follow regarding whether someone's appointed to the same position or different position. There's an application process, there's a time clock on it, there's service and separation, there's some notice requirements on that, and then they, the key points, there's a ten percent wage reduction over current wages that are enforced for the position, they do receive annual wage increases annually, their longevity pay is waived, they're not eligible for promotion and special assignment, we do have the ability to make special exceptions, full-time schedules, basically paid sick leave, doesn't count toward hours work, requires annual evaluations, I mean, these people are not on an island, they are subject to the same rigorous things, and even more so than what other employees would be subject to. And then there's leave bank, you get some vacation days, and personal leave holiday pay is per the township manual, they do not, they can accrue sick bank, but they can't convert it upon when they break service a second time. Really happy to answer any questions that you have, but this resolution would put the policy in place.
I know you're someone that's focused on fiscal discipline. How do you see this program contributing to our financial goals while supporting critical operations?
Well, I think this will be probably a very fast discussion, and we can just probably vote on it and move on. That was a joke, by the way. It's been the whole topic over the past two months for us. Actually, if it's okay, I'll probably have Mr. Becker start. I know he's been the most vocal on this with social media and Claremont Sun and stuff. I'll let you go ahead and defer to you for a moment, that's all right.
Yeah, I mean, likewise, I'd say, Trustee Becker, I know, I've seen you have some reservations regarding the policy, and I guess a question that came to mind for me is, what alternatives do you see for addressing workforce retention and the lost institutional knowledge? I'm hoping the floor, the floor, do you?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I typically, you know, speak off the cuff and, you know, or off some notes, just some bullet points. This is, I guess, kind of reminds me of when we had the pot shop discussion. I had a lot to say on the topic, and what I found was easiest was just to write it all out and then just kind of read it as a monologue. That way I'm concise and as efficient as I can be, and so I get all my thoughts out.
If I, just before we get started, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
You reference pot shop, you mean the medical marijuana dispensaries that we put resolution to regulate or limit their activity?
Yeah, that are now, yeah, in addition to medical, that are recreational as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, same ones.
All right, perfect, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I want to begin by pointing out that I have no animosity toward any government employee making rational decisions regarding their employment and personal finances within the law. Mr. Perkins was in here earlier, and, you know, he went to Goshen to be a double-dipper. I say, God bless him, you know, whatever works for him, I'm good with that. What I'm not good with is government allowing the double-dipping. I'm getting ahead of myself here. So furthermore, I have no problem with state, local governments hiring retirees from any private or federal retirement system. So that would include military, for example, or of course, any corporate pension. Out-of-state retirees, ten ninety-nine independent contractors or consultants are okay as well. None of them would be double-dipping on a taxpayer-subsidized State of Ohio government pension plan. Double-dipping is a controversial indulgence unique to government and an abuse of the taxpayer-subsidized State of Ohio pension programs. If it were a good idea, it would be a common practice across corporate America. Instead, double-dipping is virtually unheard of in the private sector. My objection to double-dipping is not with any individual, it's with the law and local governments enabling double-dipping. Frankly, my top concern is the detrimental impact double-dipping will have on current employees as well as prospects. I'm talking about the glass ceiling. The proposed double-dipping policy will have a chilling impact on employee retention and morale of our best and brightest. Current employees who have earned promotions and are waiting on retirements may have to wait an additional five years or leave Union Township. There are a number of examples that I can point to, and I'm going to name names. Consider if this policy had been in place during our tenures as trustees. Chief Gaviglia might be sitting up here, while Tony Reese maybe waits five more years or goes elsewhere to be a police chief. Chief Daimling might be sitting up here, while Austin Clements maybe waits five more years or goes elsewhere to be fire chief. We might have missed out on the opportunity to hire Heather Mason this evening because we retained a double-dipper instead. Would this double-dipper policy be fair to Derek Disbennett, who would not have been promoted to sergeant this evening? He might have to wait five more years or leave Union Township to be a sergeant elsewhere. Ask Cameron Shaw the same question. Again, he might have to wait five more years or leave Union Township to be a sergeant elsewhere. What about our people who are hopeful to be the next police chief, fire chief, or services director? And now they too, maybe, maybe wait five more years or go elsewhere to be chief or director. All promotions will be in jeopardy, prompting our best and brightest to look elsewhere. This career-killing double-dipper proposal is certainly not fair to them. It's a common refrain amongst the citizenry that government should be run more like a business. Well, in some cases, it can't. However, this is an example of where it can. So what does corporate America do? Virtually nobody gets to hire, gets to retire with their full pension and then stay on the company payroll with full benefits. However, it's not uncommon that companies rehire retired employees as ten ninety-nine independent contractors or consultants with no benefits, and I'm okay with that. When employees leave a company, it's often an opportunity to reassess and restructure departments. This leads to innovation rather than stagnation. New employees bring new ideas and talent to an organization. They are recruited in multiple ways, including signing bonuses, employee referral programs, job postings, recruitment events, internship and apprentice programs, campus recruitment, social media recruitment, recruitment agencies or headhunters, and the list goes on. I concede that in a static analysis, it is theoretically possible for a double-dipper program to save the township money under certain circumstances. However, that theoretical savings does not consider the cost of stifling innovation or the opportunity cost of failing to restructure. For example, fewer lieutenants and sergeants, as was the case under Ken Geis. Consider the opportunity costs, the opportunity costs of not bringing in new blood and reorganizing, and the cost of creating barriers to advancement, and the cost of recruiting and training new personnel, and the legal jeopardy and costs of potential discrimination lawsuits. Why did we offer a double-dipper deal to one employee and not to another? Also, consider the cost of additional administrative time and legal fees to utilize the policy, and higher healthcare premiums for all employees due to the retention of older employees. Group rates are determined by claims, experience, and other factors. Therefore, the additional costs that I've outlined dwarf any theoretical cost savings. In summary, I have no problem with any employee who chooses to be a double-dipper. The glass ceiling will have a chilling effect on opportunities for advancement and employee morale. This proposal is a career killer. Double-dipping is a controversial indulgence unique to government and an abuse of the taxpayer-subsidized State of Ohio pension programs. Corporate America innovates by reassessing and sometimes restructuring departments after employees leave. There are multiple additional costs not considered in a static cost analysis. And finally, while the double-dipper proposal is well-intentioned, it is my opinion that the concerns that I've raised are far greater than any perceived benefit. Mr. Chairman, for the reasons that I have described, I'm urging a no vote on this controversial proposal, and that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Trustee Becker. Appreciate it. Trustee Dills? I'll give the floor to you.
Well, first, Mr. Wright has spent, I'm going to just round up and say, almost a year doing research and op-ed on this program, that's how important it is, and you'll see this big thick packet here. This is all about, by the way, I don't like using the term double-dipper, it's a negative connotation, it's a retire-rehire program. I don't like the word double-dipper. And, you know, also, Mr. Becker, I appreciate you, I think you have like six, seven pages over there.
Five.
Appreciate that.
Large font.
We, you know, we, large font. We spent a lot of time on this, and I'll tell you, when I see what's coming out for next month's meeting and I look at something, I either spend thirty seconds on it or I spend as much time as needed. And, for example, I've used this example in the past, Chase Bank, they emitted domain, they had to move, you know, their building was getting knocked down, and they wanted to put up an additional sign. I call Mr. Wright up, is this okay? It's not too gaudy, it looks all right, perfect. I spent thirty seconds on it, I move on. Nobody cares how big the new Chase Bank sign is, I didn't spend much time. However, with this, I spent a lot of time, a lot of man-hours on this. I, I think Chief Reese and I, we spent about two hours in your office talking about this, the needs and the wants of it. Mr. Wright and I have spent many hours talking about this. Mr. Campbell is a Ford guy, a union guy, retired, I spent a lot, and he's, he is, for those that don't know this, and I say this with respect, he's the longest tenure up here, he has the most wisdom, and I consult Mr. Campbell a lot on very difficult decisions of what to do, and I give him a lot of respect. And the same thing with Mr. Taylor, Mr. Taylor's not up here, but Mr. Taylor's our service director, I spent a lot of time with him because it's his employees as well that are affected. I met with our service department and had lunch with the entire team and got, we had kind of a Q and A session back and forth of what the retire-rehire program is, do they want it? And I also went to a roll call meeting for, with our police department, and there was about fifteen officers there, same thing, Q and A, went back and forth, the pros, the cons, what to do, what not to do. I went to our FOP Lodge 112 meeting, about a dozen officers there. Those officers do not work for Union Township, and I got their opinions, their thoughts, what they think, and all of that. And then I called my cousin, Chuck Dills, he was the elected county sheriff in Grant County, Kentucky, for nearly thirty years, and now he's what's called the judge exec, which in Ohio terms would be a county commissioner, and I got his thoughts and opinions. He's actually still, to this day, sits on the Kentucky Law Enforcement Board for the State of Kentucky, thirty years of law enforcement, I got his opinion. I got the contract from Westchester Police Department, read over it, I got the contract from the Claremont County Sheriff's Department, and I also got Pierce Township's Department on the retire-rehire program, they all offered that. And so I wanted to see what they do, how they do it. I've spent over thirty hours researching this and finding out the pros, the cons. I took this very seriously because I know whatever policy that we vote on tonight, it'll be relatively concrete, and it'll set the bar and the stage for future, I know that. So I took this very seriously. I heard a lot about the logjam, basically denying promotions if someone is a twenty-five-year police officer, veteran, or twenty-five-year, by the way, this isn't just, this, who this affects, does not affect our fire department at all. The conversation of Chief Daimling is moot, he did, I would say it's a retire-rehire kind of program, being in the drop program, and he utilized all eight years of that, is that correct, eight years? He did maximize that health, so he was a chief for almost thirty years. So, and he, you know, so the fire department is a hundred percent exempt from this, this does not affect them at all. All the captain promotions you saw tonight is irrelevant to this program, they are not a part of this program at all. This is the police department, this is the service department, and this is our administrative office employees, not the fire department. Now, I'll also say this, as far as more research, there is a bill in the state of Ohio right now that could make this whole conversation completely moot and pointless, because there's a, there's a chance that if the state legislators and our governor pass, there could be a drop program for our police department as well, which would make this whole thing pointless. However, we all know how slow government works, and we have no idea when that program, if it does pass, when it'll actually take effect. So I wanted to put something in place that made sense for our people. So I'll ask this real quick. Well, first, the logjam issue came up a lot. It came up when I talked with our police officers at the roll call meeting, and it also came up with the service department. And actually, I want to really commend our service department guys because they're senior leadership over there, they're all like, well, I don't want to logjam promotions, and they were all willing to say, hey, I want to retire, I want to rehire, but I don't want to deny the next guy in line or next gal in line, and they made it clear that they wanted to go down as the highest-paid but entry-level position so their promotions cannot be logjammed. And a lot of the police officers had the same mindset, but also a lot of them wanted to keep their same rank. I can understand, I can understand that. So for the logjam, let me address this issue. What is in this policy is it's at the director's discretion, and what that means is, and the director would be the police chief, our service director, and Mr. Wright, our administrator, and then it has to be approved by the administrator as well. So it's an, it's an as-needed basis, so for example, if we have a retire-rehire, let's say sergeant in our police department, twenty-five-year veteran, and we have a road patrol problem, if the police chief desires, they could take that sergeant and put them down as a road patrol. Therefore, that, the whole conversation of logjam is irrelevant, it's at the director's discretion of what we're needed and where it's needed at. Whereas if our police chief, for example, says, thinks to himself that the sergeant's doing a great job, we want to keep him or her in this position, and there's no one else that they feel like they can step up, he can keep them in that position, or they can drop down to road patrol. That's at the director's discretion. So, and you have to think, if we have a police chief in place, they're basically the CEO of the police, our administrator who's the CEO of the township, you have to respect their decisions and what they think, and if they feel like... respect their decisions and what they think, and if they feel like there's a need for that current position to stay filled, then they will. If not, they can always drop them down to wherever the township's needed, but it's at their discretion. Also, keep in mind, it's not, it's not a given. Times ebbs and flows. And my next point, and I'm gonna defer to Chief Reese in just a moment, is times ebbs and flows. There was a time where, to the, the mid 2000s, where one applicant, one position, you'd get 200 applications to be a police officer. Well, now we get barely 10. And, and so, there is a high demand for police officers. Nobody wants to be police officers anymore, and so, we have a problem. Now, this program, this policy, does not solve that problem, but it is absolutely a Band-Aid that helps solve the problem, but it doesn't solve the problem entirely, and I know that. So, Chief Reese, I'm gonna defer to you for a moment. Can you, can you walk me through current situation where we're at now with our police officers? Are you getting a lot of applicants? Are there a lot of, lot of people out there wanting to be police officers? How hard is it to keep our current police officers? And, not only for today, but what do you foresee in the future? If you had a crystal ball in front of you, what do you think tomorrow, next year, five years, 10 years looks like for the state of police officers and applications and people wanting to become officers today? What are your thoughts?
Well, I appreciate you asking my opinion on that, since it directly affects the police department. One of my biggest concerns is the chief of police is making sure we've got enough people to do what we need to do to serve our residents to the best of our ability. And right now, with Ms. Mason's hire tonight, I'm two people short, and I think this is why you see these programs popping up, not only around the county and the tri-state area, but around the, the country. If, it's not already built into the retirement system. These retire-rehires are being developed by these police departments to, to, to retain their people, because right now, unfortunately, in this current climate, it's not a popular job. And to answer your question, Mr. Dills, we've conducted nine, maybe 10 interviews since November 1st for these three positions. We've got one applicant that we felt, without lowering our, our hiring standards, because we've always hired very well in Union Township, and I don't wanna compromise that, we only had one person that met our criteria. And years ago, that was never the case. If we had one position, we had 30 people trying to fill it, and we had a plethora of people that not only wanted to do it, but were qualified to do it. That's just not the case anymore in this current climate across the country. It's not a popular vocation choice right now, and we're suffering from that. And I, I think, my personal opinion, it places an even bigger emphasis on retaining our best resources here at the police department, which is our people. We, we've got the best people in the county, and I don't wanna compromise that by making a bad hire. So, I think if we can retain our employees, when we need to hire people, I think it's a good move for us. You also asked if I foresee that changing. Right now, I don't. That's just the way it is across the country right now, and it's not just in Union Township or Claremont County or the city of Cincinnati. It's all over the country, and I've talked to police chiefs far and wide, and everybody is dealing with a recruitment and retention issue right now.
Thanks, Chief. And, uh, we can't 1099 them. You can't do that. That's just, that's just an erroneous conversation, because if a police officer retires, if you 1099 them, now they're a subcontractor, what do you call that? Security guard? You cannot give a security guard authorization to arrest, to pull out their weapon, to use lawful force. You can't do that. They're not an employee, they're a subcontractor at that point. So, they have to retain W-2 status. They can't be a 1099 as far as a police officer. You could make that argument for the service department, yes, but this policy's for Union Township. It's not just for one category, but as far as police officers, you can't 1099 them, it's impossible. But I, as far as cost savings, um, Mr. Wright, I want you to correct me if I'm wrong, and let's go over this, I'm on page one, let's look at the retire-rehire for a police officer right under the first gray line. Year one, now, keep, keep in mind, first off, first off, a police officer does, or any of our employees, they do not have to be rehired. This is, this is, they don't have to. If they wanna retire and go off in the sunset, they can do that. This is an option, a program for them, but if we do that, the township, as far as saving money, year one, is that $20,220 that township saves?
Shit, shit, I'm sorry, I have my microphone off. See, yes, potentially. So, if you hire a, if you do a retire versus a new hire at a probationary rate, which would be somebody right out of the academy.
Correct.
That could save us upwards of $20,000, a little bit over $20,000.
First year, year one.
For year one, correct, and it, and it varies depending upon what rate of experience they come in at.
Sure.
So.
And year two?
Uh, so, so really, if you look at, if we hire, so in this cost analysis, that's, that's the one-year savings per, based on where you bring somebody in at.
Correct.
So, so you look at, like, if you hire a probationary rate person versus a retire-rehire, you, you know, you would save for the retire-rehire program about $20,200. If you were hire somebody that has one to three years of experience, maybe one to four years of experience, something like that, you're looking at a slight, a slight reduction in savings, where you're gonna be at about $18,000. If it's at the 24-month rate, you're at 20, almost $26,000. And then, if you look at versus a 36-month employee.
14.5.
14.5, and that's just an existing snapshot of an employee, a tenured employee, that's been here for a while, and I use that just for a comparative basis. So, just, just an existing employee versus a retire-rehire, you save approximately $14,500 on that retire reentry. And then there's a cost analysis over four years, if you look at the police department's wage scale, because they're on a four-year wage scale basis, that's the best way to really look, because you've got probationary, year one, year two, year, year three, so you've got four steps, right? And if you look at that cost savings, and again, it depends on what level of experience you go out and recruit and bring in.
Sure.
This cost savings could vary anywhere between, over a four-year period, $41,000 to about, to a number as high as $69,000, and you're looking at a basis of $58,000 over an existing employee. So, there, there are considerable cost savings. Again, it's hard to...
Yeah, but ballpark, over a period of...
Yeah, year one.
Four, four years, you're looking at between $41,000 and $69,000 in savings by implementing this program compared to a new hire.
You could say, yeah, yeah.
And that's not even talking about the 25 roughly years of knowledge and wisdom and experience that we'd also be losing as well. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's priceless.
So, um, basically, the, the, if someone is a police officer for 25 years, they paid into their pension, that's their money, they just choose to re, they choose to retire, and if we decide that they're a good employee, we wanna bring them back on at the director's discretion, we rehire them back on, and again, it's at the director's discretion. We can drop them down to road patrol or keep them in the same rank that they currently are. They've paid into that pension for, for X amount of years, that's their money, they've earned it, and, and if, we have to fill that position regardless, and if they're a good employee, why not keep that employee? Why lose them? The gentleman you saw spoke earlier, he's re, he's rehired back with Goshen. We lost him, because this program wasn't in place, and, and he was a hell of an officer, and so, and, and Goshen got him. So, um, I, the, the two, the two, the two, I'm trying to weigh out my pros and cons here on my list. Basically, logjam, I feel like I've addressed it, and what's, I don't even know what the other issue is. But also, you know, Chief Reese, would you agree that it does put a timestamp? So, for example, how long can somebody be a police officer, do where they're forced to retire? How long?
Well, currently with the police department, there's three different retirement groups. There's C, B, and A, depending on what age you are, how much time you have in. So, anywhere, right now, our officers can retire anywhere from 25 years on to 32 years on.
Okay.
Now, I would also argue that if you have a retire-rehire program, you're theoretically, you can put somebody on a clock. In other words, rather than stay 31 years and create that logjam, they retire after, say, 26 or 27 years, and they go into drop for two or three years. So, you're, at least you know, you're putting them on a time clock. Once they retire, they're only gonna be around another three to five years, where they could stick around theoretically 35, 36 years if they want to. I mean, that, we don't force them into retirement unless they can't do the job. So, theoretically, this retire-rehire, you know, at least you know, once they, they go into that program, how long they're gonna stick around for, and they're not hanging on forever.
We have three positions available after tonight, now we have two. You had 10 applications, nine of them were no good, they did not meet our expectations, you did not hire them, you only hired one tonight. You just had three sergeants retire all in one month. Now, that's very rare, but we did. If...
What, one sergeant and two police officers?
Apologies. So, we had three, three officers total retire. If this program was in place, where would you be at right now? Hypothetically, speaking hypothetically.
Well, I don't think we'd have any vacancies.
I would agree.
I think we would have people that would utilize the program, and, and they wouldn't leave, and that, again, that's the goal with the retire-rehire, from my standpoint, is retaining people and not having to fill empty positions, because we don't have applications.
If, if, if the state of the economy, the state of, of, of how police officers are, if we're good, and an officer retires, you don't have to bring them back. That's up to your discretion with this policy. I don't know. I, it's, it's, Mr. Logue, I'm gonna go and let you talk. I don't think anything else to say for now.
Okay, all right. I've been taking some notes here. I'm gonna just clarify a couple things. Chief, a couple quick ones for you, it's kinda like a yes or no, but would you use this policy at your discretion? So hypothetically, environment, there's 20, 25, 30 applicants, your discretion is at your discretion?
When you say applicants, do you mean applicants for the retire-rehire program?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, if there was new hire applicants, brand-new employees, however, however we classify that term.
I mean, if we have a, if we have an opening and we have somebody that wants to retire or rehire, I would bring them back, as opposed to going out and searching for somebody to come in and, and apply for the job, and, and hopefully they meet the criteria, and hopefully they're, they're, you know, up to our standards and our quality.
If you, if you had 20 applicants that were up to our standards, up to our quality, and the environment is different, everyone wants to be a police officer again.
Yeah.
Um, not mandating a program, but being at the discretion of what the needs to make the township safe.
Right, right, yeah. I, I follow you, and I would rather look at the applicant pool.
Okay, so...
If I have that luxury.
Okay. And then, yes or no, you said, you essentially said that the policy can incentivize early retirement, because it starts a clock.
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay. Mr. Wright, for you, I'm kinda, just keep it simple, like, yes or no? We, public comment, was there a public comment period we opened up?
We, it was on the website for, I think I posted it right after, was it the 26th?
Shortly after Christmas.
Yeah, right after Christmas.
Did we receive comments?
I got no emails.
No emails, no concerns.
My email, my email was actually posted out there for everybody, spammers alike, to grab, and I got lots of spam emails, because they were having my...
And we pushed the message on social media.
Yeah, I believe that we did.
I know, I saw...
Something, and there was something out there. I, it was out there for more than three weeks, which...
As Mr. Becker said earlier, controversial aspect of a policy, or as Mr. Dills said, a policy that could be rather finite. I felt that it was very important to provide the public the opportunity to see a draft policy and provide comment to you.
I got no emails.
No emails received.
None.
Okay. Is this based in state law? Yes or no?
This policy? This policy is consistent with state law.
Okay, so state law allows it. Um, so, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not a, I'm not a state legislator.
That, that, Mr. Logue, I should clarify, that's not a legal opinion. This policy has been reviewed by our law director's office for compliance with state law.
Okay, all right. It's legally acceptable to be able to have.
Just wanna make sure, yeah.
Uh, yes or no, do we, would this policy allow the township to save on 14% being paid into a pension of a, of a extended employment, uh, person? By no longer paying into their pensions?
This policy allows for a reduction in the pension contribution for law enforcement applicants, because currently, law enforcement employer shares are 18.1%. When they already retire reentrant, they drop to a normal O-Pers employee rate of 14% for the employer contribution.
Okay.
Normal, I, I say normal O-Pers, as though there's not an abnormal O-Pers, there's an O-Pers LE, and then there's an O-Pers. People like me, Mr. Eubright, Mr. McCormick, we pay into O-Pers. Sworn officers pay into O-Pers LE. So, there is a 4% pension reduction for a police officer that's a retire reentrant. There is no pension reduction for a normal O-Pers retire reentrant, because they're already at the, at the 14%.
Okay. So, the township saves on what they pay into the pension?
We, yeah, we do, we do save for certain positions on the pension, yeah.
Do you view, uh, do you view the hiring for extended employment program being at the discretion of the directors to hire or not to hire and to utilize it?
Yes, I believe the policy provides the discretion is, is entirely at the recommendation of the department head and the, and the discretion of township administrator, and I believe the policy specifically speaks to it being need-based, need-based.
As a safeguard, does the applicant then come before this board of trustees?
So, the applicant, oh, when they're in the process?
Yes.
They do, the applicant does, uh...
So, the board could choose...
Well, so, that's, that's somewhat correct. If the township administrator denies a request to participate, that decision is final.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that you won't hear from an applicant.
Okay.
But, that is supposed to end the, end the process.
But, if a director brings forward an applicant...
A recommendation, and they successfully pass, you know, the evaluation process...
They have to be hired in a public setting.
Correct, and, and...
However, this board could vote no, just like we could choose not to hire somebody tonight.
You, you could choose to vote no on an action, and there is either a public hearing, a, a, a defined public hearing, if they're appointed to the same position, there's, it's more of the traditional process, uh, no public hearing, I mean, it's still a public hearing, I mean, we get it.
If, if the, if the board wanted to have the policy, there's always a public hearing, we could always have a public hearing.
Essentially...
Board could always be the end-all hire or, or not hire decision.
Essentially, the board has public action, it's whether or not you call it a public hearing or not.
Okay.
Depends on the position.
So, okay, so, an applicant for extended employment program would come before the board, and the board can make that determination to hire or not, as final.
Question?
Direct, uh, director is, the director is able to put the applicant at any location? I believe that's been clear. Yes or no?
The director can recommend, the township administrator can offer the same position or a different position or a different job classification throughout the township.
Does this essentially hire the, does it essentially expand the hiring pool? More applicants? We need, we need people to work, we're trying to hire people right out of college, we're trying to hire anybody. Does this expand the hiring?
It resolves your need to access the hiring.
Well, as I see it, they retire, they're technically...
Become part of the applicant.
But they have to rehire.
You're drawing from a potential applicant pool, yes.
Does this have capped wage, wages?
There are, uh, it does cap, so, yes and no. So, it caps the wages at 90% of the base wage to the position, to the job classification that they're appointed. They are entitled to the traditional wage increases in the CBA, so, but it locks them in at a 10% lower rate for whatever that is.
Is there a term limit?
For this?
Yes.
So, it's a three-year initial term with the ability to extend to additional 12-month terms?
So, yes to term limits?
Yes.
Is there a performance evaluation?
There are performance evaluations.
Okay. Now, this next section is, uh, does this increase or decrease? So, mentorship, opportunity mentorship, is there an increase or decrease to mentorship opportunities?
You would have additional mentorship opportunities.
Okay. Quality of service, does quality of service increase or decrease by utilizing this program?
I believe that quality of service is, is maintained and enhanced.
Training and recruitment costs, increase or decrease?
Uh, decreases your initial, it, it decreases your initial training costs. Uh, decreases your initial, it, it decreases your initial training cost.
Salary costs, increase or decrease?
Your base wages would, would decrease over the job classification.
And then overall manpower, increase or decrease?
Well, I don't know that, that-
Just to fulfill the vacancies?
It holds, it holds constant, I mean, I don't, I don't really know how to, you would be able to fill vacancies more quickly through this process, potentially.
Increase your manpower issues, or decrease the manpower issues by having actual people?
You reduce staff shortages, potentially, if participants want to stay in the program.
Okay. Okay. Alright, thanks for clarifying those simple areas. Mr. Jackson, I heard you comment from, from the crowd. I, I don't have public comment right now, I'd be happy to-
I don't have a comment, I have a question. I'm trying to understand why the fire department is not included in that. Somebody does their drop to thirty-three years, can they not come back to work for that same department? If we've got people, for example, Chief Nyman, that tear after thirty-three years till drop, and then went to work for second joint, including fire retired again.
Depends on the pension system.
I, I think because the pension sys, systems, that that's not pertinent to this policy right now, but I do wanna have you get information, get answers on that. I want Chief Clements to be able to tag up with you and, and get you on, on the same page with that. So gentlemen, at this time, if, if there's no further comment, is there any further comment? I just wanna clarify those kinda simple points, a little bit longer.
Just wanna say that we have a police shortage. There's not a lot of applicants, there's just not, and Mr. Becker, do you have another solution to solving that problem? More money, more bonuses, more referrals, I mean, what, what, what do you, what do you wanna do here? Because this isn't just a union township issue, this is, I talked to my cousin down in Kentucky, and he says if it wasn't for this program, his, his department down there for Grant County would have been hurting significantly.
The short answer, Mr. Dills, is that, you know, I, I'm okay with the, the senior staff people, with the police officers, you know, service department, wherever they are. Moving, you know, taking their retirement checks and moving to whatever township they wanna go to and, and take their services, continue working. I'm fine with that, and I'm fine with poaching their younger people and bringing them here. As I mentioned in my five pages, that incentive bonuses, signing bonuses, bringing people in can be structured. Referral bonuses to the existing employees can also be implemented. There are ways, there's things we can do, and I went through a list of what businesses do in recruiting, we do some of that, we could do more of that. I think there's more we could do to attempt recruiting.
I agree.
I like this, the Becker bonus program.
There you go.
I, I agree, I'm just simply talking about the pool of applicants. You could throw all the money one at the wall. There just simply aren't people going through the academy, there just simply aren't people applying.
There's a ton of police officers who have jobs that are out there that may be incented to come here to Union Township. That's a big pool of people.
So are you, two, two questions, and I'm, I'm just, I'm gonna be done, I think. Number one, so no matter how much of a man shortage we have, are you an absolute no on this policy?
For the reasons I described and, and our current discussion here, yes, because I don't think it's necessary.
So no matter, okay, and then also, no matter how much money, because ballpark, according to Mr. Wright, forty-one to seventy thousand dollars will be saving. No matter how much money we save the taxpayers, you're also a no-go on this policy, right?
And I went through a, I think a page and a half of cost considerations that are not considered in that static analysis.
Got nothing else, Mr. Wright?
Okay. Do you have anything further, Mr. Becker? Gentlemen, as you both just brought something up, I, I make kind of a joke about a, a nice term of Becker bonus program, but Mr. Wright, can, if, if I get support of the two board members here, can we take some action to, I, I know you, you would need to talk with Beverly and our HR, what can we look at to being able to provide like a ten thousand dollar signing bonus, that type of avenue for attracting key essential personnel that we need to for safety services or whatever the right terminology needs to be? And then I know more specifically for police, there's their training academies that, that these young individuals, Mr. Becker's talking about, they're paying out of pocket to go to their training academies. I kinda feel like it's, you gotta hire for character and quality, and we, I think we need to take some of the burden off these, these young individuals.
So a couple of things. In the last IAFF contract, we negotiated the ability to reimburse, to put people through medic school. So that was a positive thing. Similarly, in the police union contract, we have the ability to reimburse for OPADA fees already, so we are doing those things. Basically, if you're talking about compensation, you're probably gonna wanna tie that to some years of service requirement with that. And, um-
I, I would definitely, I would definitely say ten thousand dollars in exchange for a five-year commitment.
Yeah, well, and so my point to that is, is you're gonna have to negotiate, we would have to reopen or do MOUs with the bargaining units and pursue those. So I'll talk to Beverly about that, I'll explore that further and update the board.
If there's a way we can do it that doesn't complicate because of the timeline of being engaged with bargaining units on that, that'd be helpful, but-
Thank you.
Take a look at that. But I, I, I really think that that's forward-thinking, uh, it sounds like I've got support from Mr. Dills and Mr. Becker on us taking care of training costs for police the best that we can, and us taking care of some type of signing, recruitment, incentive, bonus. And I think that if, if through those mechanisms we're able to incentivize people to come here, great, and then the discretion of people like the chief, they don't need to be focused with an extended employment program if they've got a pool of young, new applicants that are wanting to come in that are qualified.
Sure, I could update the board on that as we make progress.
Alright. That sounds great. Okay, Mr. Beck, uh, Mr. Campbell?
You want to do the motion?
Yeah, that's what I needed. I entertain the motion to approve the Union Township Extended Employment Program adoption.
So moved.
I prefer you second this, Mr. Logue.
Okay, I'll, I'll second it.
Thank you.
Uh, no further discussion? Call a roll, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
No.
Motion carries.
Alright gentlemen, moving forward, item two, resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero three, resolution authorizing the sales surplus through GovDeals Inc. Mr. Wright, you want to give us a brief intro?
Sure, uh, this is just something we have to do annually to do internet auctions, and GovDeals has been very successful for us. This just reauthorizes for twenty twenty-five.
Uh, gentlemen, you familiar with the GovDeals process? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright gentlemen, comments from board members, I'll kick us off just real briefly. I just wanna say, as we start the new year, take a moment and port, uh, to reflect on the importance of our, our work, our shared goals for twenty twenty-five. One, I'd say the holidays reminds us of the values that bring us together, family, service, community. I know, you know, we had a Merry Christmas, I hope everyone else here did, enjoy time with the loved ones, everyone here that's in the audience. Also very exciting, uh, as this new year brings opportunities, new leadership at the national level, and that's gonna be exciting for our country with Ohio's own Vice President JD Vance and President Donald Trump. I don't know if you guys saw, but it seemed as if it was pulling teeth apparently for Middletown City Council to do anything to recognize their citizen, JD Vance being Vice President, so I found that kind of interesting that his, his dear mother had to show up at a city council meeting and basically demand and ask that they put up a sign for him. So, but anyway, uh, look forward to working with all of you in this coming year. You know, Joe, I wanna give the floor to you, I was kinda just thinking, you know, what thoughts you may have for twenty twenty-five and where you hope to see us go as a board, and give the floor over to you.
Well, first, uh, it's okay if we disagree, it's okay. Mr. Becker and Mr. Logue and I, we, we all get along very well, and, uh, we just disagreed on that policy, so it's okay. We vote, we move on, and then, uh, life goes on, it's okay. So, uh, you asked for my twenty twenty-five? Yeah, yeah, so, uh, Klepper Park got redone, I think, I think we're, besides that, um, the, the water park, not the water park, but the splash pad, once that's completed, I think, uh, Klepper Park's done, Veterans Park. It's our most popular park, um, I would like to focus on that, get that playground redone. Uh, also, uh, continue to recruit for a new restaurant brewery for our town. That, uh, the new site that we just approved tonight, uh, that'll help, but I think, uh, I think if we still focus on a non-franchise-style restaurant brewery to come to Union Township would be great, so. Yeah, those are the two, two big lofty goals that I have, so.
Fantastic.
Yeah, but, uh, no, as far as twenty twenty-five, we, we, uh, we got a lot of good things coming, and I'm excited, so it'll be a good year.
Thank you, Trustee Dills, appreciate it, Joe.
Thank you.
Uh, John, um, like I always value your perspective also and how we continue to balance our goals of fiscal responsibility and, and community growth. Just like to hear your perspective and what you're looking forward to for twenty twenty-five, anything, give the floor over to you.
Uh, looking forward to Glen Estee Whiteman's Road Overpass getting, uh, open.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you hit it, got that right.
Gentleman from Care Springs, uh, or whatever the place was, is also looking forward to it, keep the semis out of his parking lot. No, I, I think, um, twenty twenty-five is gonna be a great year for Union Township, it's, uh, I have nothing but optimism. There's no reason why it can't be.
Wonderful.
And, and, you know, I mean, case in point, it's recent snowfall, I mean, it was, I don't know, once every ten years? You have something like that, it's not something you can plan for, you know, it just happens. Or you might get, you know, a few days, uh, advanced notice. And the services department, you know, went out like gangbusters, I mean, they did fabulous. And, and, you know, and, and, I mean, we hear example after example of, of, of the police department in these call-out reports and how they crack big cases, you know, the gun shop robberies, where, you know, where they, you know, the car got wiped out on the corner, East Gate Boulevard, uh, there in front of AT&T. And, um, you know, so they, you know, that was a big, big case. Obviously got a lot of notoriety where the, you know, the people bumping off car washes, not a big case. I mean, not a lot of, not notoriety, I should say. It was just examples of great police work. And, you know, with the fire department, um, you know, everybody loves a fireman. And, uh, you know, I never hear any complaints about the fire department. And, uh, you know, they, they, they do a fabulous job. And that's true with all the staff here, you know, and, and, uh, I think that's gonna continue, I think a lot of that has to do with our administrator. And, uh, you know, there's nobody better than Mr. Wright, I mean, he's, he's just been fabulous, so, so good to work with. Can't say enough good things about him. You know, so to kinda shift gears, my only thoughts on, um, I guess the prior discussion we had, it's just, it's an example of how we can disagree agreeably. Nobody got heated, we can still walk out of here friends, we'd have a difference of opinion, majority rules. We move on, and that concludes my remarks.
That's good. Hey, that's, that's, that's a good example for the community, I'll, I'll just put you at, uh, share, share that sentiment. You know, I did get a chance to plug it very early on, but January of, I'm reminded now, so yeah, it was January first, that tree fell. I'm telling you guys, this was, we got stopped just feet before this tree would have just been detrimental to myself, my family, my car. Just terrible, uh, but we got stopped by the grace of God, which is just wonderful, uh, and to see the tree fall. But I was thinking of you as the, as the fire trucks came up, we got the chainsaws out, and I'm sitting there with residents that just came walking up and we're hauling away tree, I needed Joe Dills, we didn't even need chainsaw, just throw that tree, you know, just huck it with your pinky. But, um, but we're lugging this thing over off the side of the road, and then a neighbor came down with a broom, and his broom broke, and so, you know, and I'm taking the broom handle and cleaning it by hand, and I thought of, I thought of Mr. Becker. I was like, where's Mr. Becker right now to, to get, get, get his photo of, of me sweeping the street by hand? It's kicking off, uh, New Year's Day, I think right in the middle, I think Ohio State maybe had the game going on still, so. But anyway, uh, hey, perseverance, and, and, and twenty twenty-five's gonna be wonderful, so. I'm gonna get to the upcoming events, so, um, Union Township Zoning, oh, I'll give you guys this to think on, um, February eighteenth is the next regularly scheduled trustees meeting and the JED district meeting. That had been moved from the second Tuesday of February to, I believe that's the third Tuesday in February, and I had ended up with a scheduling mishap, that I am out of state on February eighteenth. So I wanted to put it on your minds right now as I read through the upcoming events, if you guys wanna continue on without me or if you want to, uh, bring it maybe out another week to the twenty-fifth, Wednesday, Wednesday, uh, the twenty-fifth, is what I was looking at for that meeting. So, Union Township Zoning Commission will meet on Wednesday, January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five at seven PM. Case will be forwarded to the board trustees following conclusions in zoning commission hearing along with commission's recommendation. The Union Township Board of Zoning Appeals is scheduled to meet on Thursday, February sixth, twenty twenty-five, pending receipt of cases to consider. If no applications are received, no meeting will be held. Township offices will be closed on Monday, January twentieth, twenty twenty-five, and ob, observance of Martin Luther King holiday. The annual Christmas tree recycling program runs through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, through, trees may be dropped off at Union Township Service Department, four three one two Glen Estee Whiteman's Road. Be sure to remove all lights and decorations prior to drop-off. Consider using Union Township Retail Post Office in the lower level civic center for all of your shipping and mailing needs. And that is a, uh, an area where the township makes money. So gentlemen, back up to my question for you, is the board trustees' next regularly scheduled meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at six PM currently, and there's also a coinciding public hearing for proposed JED District Nine will be held on Tuesday, February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at six PM. Updated notices were published, uh, for the required, um, JED District meeting. I checked with Mr. Wright, he said that if we do change this February eighteenth date, he can ensure that the legal requirements for publishing are met and that there's no impact to township business for regular business operations.
What date are you proposing?
Probably third, third Tuesday.
Twenty-fifth. Actually, the, the Wednesday.
You want Wednesday?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the Wednesday, the twenty-sixth.
A Wednesday?
February twenty-sixth, is that possible?
Is that a Wednesday?
Is that an issue, Corey?
We have a zoning commission meeting on the twenty-
Okay, so then the twenty-fifth.
Is that, is, is it because you don't wanna miss that JED meeting, is that what it is, the vote?
Something significant is the JED meeting, it'd be nice to, to, to be in attendance for, um, but otherwise, yeah, I trust you guys to handle it.
Sure, cool. I'll defer.
I, I can, I, I have no problem with twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth would be the fourth Tuesday.
Fourth Tuesday.
Yeah, does that work with your schedule?
Why couldn't we do the eleventh, second Tuesday?
I'm, I'm out of town.
He's out of town, and I'm out of town on the eighteenth.
Is that, is that it, is it just the, uh, I, I don't have the agenda in front of you, there, there was another, is there, what, is there a major vote?
I don't know yet, I don't know yet, um-
If, if there's no major vote-
No, I mean, it's gonna be normal business, but we did a JED hearing, is, you know, the, the issue is, is that you have a thirty-day clock that you have to have an inspection period on, and you have to publish notices, paper, or any website, and everything else.
Well-
So-
Is, but that's the, so is that the, is the JED vote the only?
That's the only, I, yeah, I don't, I mean, I'm just-
There's no, nothing like big or controversial?
Not that I know of, I mean, hang on a second, Mr. McCormick's waving frantically. You do have a zoning case.
January, that if it moves forward, would carry into February, and that's gonna put you past the twenty day.
Yeah, so the trustees in five nineteen twelve, you have so many days, uh, so the zoning commission has to go between twenty and forty, and then after the trustee, after the zoning commission gets it, and they take action, the trustees have thirty, thirty days, you have to hear it. So they're gonna be on the what day, the twenty second?
Yes.
So you count thirty up from there, so the twenty-fifth puts us- So you count thirty up from there, so the twenty-fifth puts us beyond that, so we're in a.
So that's too much of an impact then to move, move that meeting, so that, it sounds like, it sounds like you guys should just continue on. Vice chairman, you become chairman for the February eighteenth meeting and the two of you run it.
Or, or move it back to the second Tuesday.
I think that they've already missed the public, the publication.
Oh, unanimous, it's too.
Is it, what's that?
If the quorum is two.
Okay, gotcha.
Two overs.
Okay.
We're, we're, it sounds like worst-case scenario, something would need to get changed prior to that because of any scheduling issue, we could always have a special meeting to, to address.
Yeah, I mean, we, if, if the board needs to schedule a meeting, I could, I could put together twenty, I mean, with the here, there's two things we could do with zoning commission meeting. We can ask the applicant to delay, we can ask the applicant to voluntarily submit to that revised schedule.
Okay, for, for, so the.
I'd rather do that and move the meeting back to the twenty-fifth.
Let's do that.
And ask the applicant to forego that for, what, three or four, five days, seven days, Mark?
Yeah, the only other bad thing is that if we have a meeting and it doesn't work, the zoning commission's the next night.
You know, that's just something we'll have to manage.
It's too late to move back to the second Tuesday, isn't it? Because you're, you have to have notice.
Correct, thirty days.
Just do the meeting without me, but never mind, never mind, never mind, all right, so.
The eighteenth was great, but I can move it to the twenty, I can move it to the twenty-fifth.
You can't.
I, I, yes, I, I have to get the notices out like now.
You, you need to be at the meeting.
Like now, like probably get them out to the acquirer.
If you believe I need to be there at that meeting, then I will be there at that meeting.
You gotta be there.
So, so let's, let's do the twenty-fifth, apologize about the conflict for the eighteen.
But do, do you think that the zoning will be fine, maybe an issue?
It's gonna have to be, I mean, we'll ask, Mark, we, you'll talk to the applicant tomorrow.
Probably.
Just tell him he's gonna need to submit a letter that, you know, it's where we are. I could either schedule a special meeting of the board to hear the zoning case, which I don't think we really want to do, or we can just push it to the twenty-fifth. We've done it before, I mean, most people are pretty reasonable.
Okay, let's, let's play this out, uh, if it works out great, it sounds like it will, but what if it doesn't?
If it doesn't, we will have to hold a special meeting to hold a public hearing for the zoning case.
Okay.
That's what we do.
Worst-case scenario?
To keep him in the thirty-day clock, but I think he'll voluntarily agree to extend that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I hate to delay any business that, that he has a zoning case, so maybe that's the case, but.
Okay.
Okay, so I, so if I understand correctly, you would like for me to ma- make, uh, uh, arrangements to, to reschedule the JED public hearing and the regular business meeting to two twenty-five, is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
Amongst the board members?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, I'll take care of that.
This is the only, uh, this is the only month I have, I, I'm, I'm out of town, apologize, guys.
Oh, all good.
We have a, I, I guess, Mr. Campbell, do you need a motion to do that?
We should.
Yeah, so gentlemen, I entertain a motion to, um, reschedule the board trustees' next regular meeting, uh, for Tuesday, February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at six PM, uh, to February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five at six PM. And the JED District Nine meeting also being held on Tuesday, February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at six PM to February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five at six PM. And that all legal requirements and publish, published notices are published.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Let's go to adjourn.
I got, I got one more interesting fact for you, but okay, I'll tell you afterwards, um.
What is your fact, let's go?
It's, well, it's odd because Andrew turns, and I, Andrew turns five on February twenty twenty-fifth and, yeah.
She's good at Kaylee.
Oh, no, she's good with it, I checked with her, but, um, he turns five on February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. And so five years ago to the day, we got discharged from Mercy Anderson Hospital like at four PM. They were giving us a runaround, but I was like, I got a trustees' meeting I gotta make or not make. And they were like, went ahead and discharged me right away, so I got home, got the kids settled and came to the trustees' meeting. So it's Andrew's birthday trustee meeting, that's what I said, it's a fun, fun fact.
They can, they can come and attend.
All right, so you guys, I'm gonna tell them that Dills said he's gonna sing them happy birthday and, and Becker's, uh, gonna bring brownies.
My wife can do that.
We'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
My second.
Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
For adjourn at nine fifty-one PM.